Just got to get things ready to go here, get us rolling.
I always get the short chair.
That's right. Got to get those to lift up. They're adjustable.
Like some background music? Randy's always prepared.
That's right. Randy's good for the music. Set us in the mood. Well, good, good.
Is Jake going to be with us?
I believe.
Is Jake going to be with us?
I believe so. That's all right. We do have a quorum, so we are good to go. Okay. Our mascot.
Where's Lincoln? We can start him.
Did you hear we were talking about you, Lincoln?
We were waiting for you, Lincoln. Welcome. Now we can begin. Lincoln is an amazing community member. He comes to our council meetings. I don't know if it's for fun or for punishment.
Enjoyment, learning, teaching.
Awesome. Sometimes the room is quite empty and he's our dedicated man to the end. So keeping us straight, right? All right, are we good to go? Thank you. All right, welcome everybody. We'd like to welcome you to our council meeting here this evening on Monday, July 18th, 2022. We are going to first, myself, Carolyn Lundberg, Mayor Lundberg, I'm happy to conduct this meeting and we welcome all that are here present or maybe online. We are going to always start our meetings with an invocation and I'd like to thank Councilmember Randy Powell and invite her to stand and do that, followed by which we will have a pledge of allegiance led by one of our CERT leaders, Mr. Glenn Mitchell.
Our dear, kind, gracious heavenly father, we're grateful to gather as community members for this beautiful city of Linden to discuss the matters before us on our agenda. We pray for guidance as we do this. We pray for good interaction with each other. Father, most of all, we also pray for protection for those who defend us. We're grateful for the liberties that we have in this, in this great country. We're grateful for the freedoms that are afforded us and we're grateful for the wisdom of our founding fathers who've put these things into place. We ask for thy guidance as we go through this day and we pray for safety as we depart this meeting and we say these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
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 All right.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right. All right, we're going to kick off this meeting. We first have a call to order and we'll have a roll call here of those that are present here on the dice. I'll start here to my left.
Randy Powell, present.
Jake Hoyt, present.
Carolyn Lundberg, present.
Mike Vancherri, present.
Daryl McAlvey, present.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. And we would like to excuse Councilmember Van Broderick, who is recovering from surgery, and we wish him Godspeed on his recovery there. We will now turn to our presentations and announcements and we have a wonderful presentation tonight by our emergency coordinator. She's fantastic here and our new CERT team, Kelly. Are you ready for me to turn this over to you?
We were trying to pull up some pictures that I don't have connection to yet.
Okay, great. I will go ahead and share with you a little bit. So we have some folks here in the back. You'll see them in their emergency lime yellow vests. And some years ago, we had an active CERT program in the city and then some years went by and it had been some time. And we are so proud of Kelly and grateful to her for, you know, being as passionate as she is. She's an incredible asset here. And one of the things that we really wanted to do was to be sure that we revived the Community Emergency Response Team. Now, in the past, we usually had to get help with training of our individuals from a sister city such as Orem. But this time, we were able to have our own leaders and a team of invested and community members come together and they trained. Was it four Saturdays altogether? Three Saturdays, but it was, there were some long Saturdays we were there. And I'd like to thank Angie and Mike, if you could stand for a minute. We're going to have our CERT team come up in a moment. But these guys were rock star teachers. Let's just give them a round of applause. A scout round. Anyway, they were amazing. They, they presented such incredibly fine material. They brought in guests and medical people. And we have a team here tonight that we're going to introduce you tonight, our first homegrown, home-trained CERT team. And these guys are going to go forward. We're going to continue to have additional trainings in the future. So community members can get on boarded with this, but these are kind of our leader, our leadership class that has come. So thank you to all of you for volunteering your time and being here and we want to recognize you. Are we ready, Kelly?
Well, I think we'll just do it in reverse order. I was going to do certificates second and do pictures first, but I think we'll reverse that while we see some of the pictures pulled up.
When you come up for your certificate, if you could stay, we would love to get a picture of the group as you are coming and acknowledged and stay there with, with us.
So one of the things that I'd like to mention, it's going to be on these photos, but these are not just our first CERT group, but these are our CERT leaders who are going to be helping carry forward the program as we move on and provide these classes more often to the public. So first, Lindsay. Thank you. After I do this, do you tell us what it is that you're going to be helping in terms of leadership?
I'm going to be helping with marketing and advertising to continue the CERT program and getting more people to be trained every single year.
I'm glad.
Moulage, which is just making people look like they've got cuts and bruises and all that kinds of stuff.
The good and gory. Make them gory. Realistic.
Not here. Mark is not here. Amy?
I am doing logistics.
Denise?
I will be in charge of volunteers to help get the volunteers there to help with activities that we have.
Yep, perfect. Shannon and Wayne, how do you come up together if you don't mind?
So we're over communications, getting the word out for the other volunteers to come and...
Helping people to sign up when they're ready, stuff like that. Katrina? And you are going to be?
I might be instructing a class here and there.
She's going to help with our instruction. In fact, my guess is that most people are. Carolyn? Come on down.
Okay.
So I think we're unique among cities to have our mayor actually go through the first class with us and we appreciate the support and hopefully she's learned some things along the way as we all have. One of the reasons that we put our leadership through at first was so that we could try to work out any bugs in the system, which we found some, so we're going to hopefully make that as much, a smooth process and a good learning experience for all the people in our community. Last-ish and certainly by a long shot, not least, I want to introduce you to our first program manager for our CERT program. Angie, would you come up, please? So Angie has been a part of CERT for a long time, helping in Orem and other cities. And she brings a lot of experience with her and we are really grateful to have her on board to help us with our program here in Linden. And also, Mike Sawyer, would you come up, please? Giving Mike a certificate is not enough for what he has provided to Utah County at large and to Linden specifically as we've been trying to start our program. So he brings so much experience and he's not a Linden resident and he's not officially a part of our program, but we invited him to participate if he'd like to and he jumped in with both feet because he's the, he's a servant leader and really helped us to be able to make our program successful. And we really appreciate you, Mike. Thanks.
All right, you guys, if you could stay there for a second. I also need to acknowledge Councilmember Randy Powell. So she is our council member liaison for the CERT program and she was tremendous. Came, you know, she's been such a fantastic support. So if you all could get a little close together, maybe we would... And thank you to the council for supporting this, you know, as a city sponsoring this, as well as whatever financial things. It's just going to make us all that much more prepared in any sort of event to have these home-trained leaders. And thank you to Mike and Angie again for all the time you gave so we can hopefully grow this program and have a very self-reliant community. So council, if you could come over and join me.
Council, as you stand up and come over, I'm going to tell a story about Randy. So not only did she, not only did she come...
Waiting for my award.
That's right, for her Oscar. And not only did she come to the classes and participate, but she also won Best Actor during our drill for coming in and screaming out your friend's name. Where is she? Where is she?
Kelsey, Kelsey.
I told Angie if she made me do it, I was going to do it pretty good.
Thank you all. If you'd like to take a picture, cheers to us. If you have to go, we have a lot of other things.
So much.
I can dress for you.
All right. So proud of them and grateful for their service all around. So thank you again.
Can I get through just a couple?
Absolutely. Let's have Kelly present a little bit more.
This is our new logo, by the way. We kind of, I did a little rehaul in Photoshop to make it Linden specific, put some mountains in the background. Hope you like it. We decided to introduce the, the CERT program and see what kind of support we might get for that at a block captain training that we did last year in August. And we had everybody who attended that go through and rotate through. You might see Mike there because he's been involved with us from the beginning. So that's about a quarter of the people that attended that. And then when we did our Linden City Drill, we had a secondary meeting for people who might be interested in continuing with the CERT program. What you're going to see in that picture is most of the people who are sitting here in this room. Following that, we did a CERT kickoff meeting to try to find leadership, volunteer leaders. And they kind of picked themselves, actually, as we did a little tabletop exercise. In terms of CERT itself, it's about a 24-hour commitment total, about 12 hours online and 12 hours in person. And these are the things that you learn. There's a ton on there. I'm not going to read this, but it is a lot of medical, a lot of, let's see, disaster psychology, fire search, light search and rescue, carries, stuff like that. And then you finish it up with a mock drill. So I'm just going to go through some pictures. This is, we got great support in the community. This is actually held at Linden Elementary School, so the schools were willing to offer us space when we didn't have it at our own buildings here in the city. The Medical Reserve Corps, which Katrina is actually the chair of the, not chair, coordinator. She's employed by Utah County as the coordinator for the Medical Reserve Corps. So she brought in some of her people to help instruct us in the medical, which was fantastic. We had Orem Fire Department, which cooperated with us for the fire suppression and training. Couple of pictures of our folks there putting out a "not fire," but it was fun to learn how to use a fire extinguisher. And there they are as a group on, on Fire Suppression Day. We did cribbing. So cribbing is basically lifting, figuring out how to lift a really heavy object off of somebody that might be trapped in or something. And also making sure that they know how to do debris removal in a safe, with safe techniques. Different types of carries, head-to-toe assessment, different kinds of bandaging and medical. This was donning and doffing. This is to be medically appropriate with donning and doffing, making sure that they're safe in the way that they put gloves on and off. This is what my desk looked like for a while. This is only some of the supplies that we used. And they were borrowed. Partly, we're working towards purchasing our own supplies so that we can be self-sufficient. A lot of these were borrowed from Spanish Fork and other, other cities. Some of them we already had, so it was, it was great to have community help with that as well. And then this was our mock disaster. So this was a gentleman who was in the city for a ham radio training that also happened in Linden the same day. Took the community center and threw a couple of things on the floor and a couple of people on the floor. And then these folks came in and practiced their skills. And they had to do search and rescue in the dark. Some of it was in the light. As I recall, Mike said that it was a textbook log roll and carry for this particular situation. In fact, I think that particular patient is one of...
One of our police youth academy.
Mike Brower's Youth Academy kids who came to volunteer for us. So it's, it's full circle here, all the things that are happening here in Linden. Other demonstrations of carries out to our medical operations area. These are in reverse order, but here's some of the things that happened at the drill. And, and this is the entire group. We actually did this in cooperation with Spanish Fork. They also had a group that was ready to graduate. It's nice when you can get a bigger group together because part of the, part of the point of having a Community Emergency Response Team is that you can get together with any other person that's been trained at any point and know how operations should work. And so putting you together with strangers who have also been trained but that you don't know allows you to practice for that. And the last slide, I don't know if she's going to appreciate this, but I appreciate her, is of Angie. Because when I was looking for a program manager to help us to really get this off on a good, on a good foot, I told a story about somebody being willing to tie somebody else's boots. And Angie is the person who's willing to tie your boots. She, this is a picture of her before or after one of our trainings or events and she was there early and stayed late. So did Mike and made sure that everything ran smoothly, putting in lots of extra hours to make that happen. And that's all I have. I appreciate your time and I appreciate these folks.
Thank you all again. Wonderful, wonderful job and hopefully we'll be repeating this and you guys will be training the next group of Linden residents. So thank you. All right. At this point, you are welcome to stay and join the Lincoln Club. Okay, guess not. All right. Or you're welcome to have a nice evening. Thank you for being here. Okay.
Mayor, what is the sign up for the next training?
Kelly, we're going to, the next training will begin most likely September-ish, October?
Yeah, it's actually, we actually have dates, so I think it's September, September 12.
Let's get...
The last two Saturdays in September and then we're going to skip the first Saturday in October. There's another big... I actually have a list of people who are interested in taking the course already and it's, it's over 50 people long. We can't have classes that big, so we'll be taking 20 to 30. We haven't quite decided, but we'll send the link out and it'll be first come, first served for people who want to sign up.
Okay, very good.
What if you know somebody? Yeah, Mike wants to try to run into three, he knows somebody.
Let's get all the council. That'd be amazing, have all the council certified. All right. Okay, great. All right, moving forward. At this point, the next item on our agenda is, we call this Open Session for Public Comment. This is an opportunity for those that may be here this evening, if they would like to bring up an issue or a discussion item for discussion only. No decisions can be made, but these are things that would not be listed on the agenda. If you would want to briefly address the council, this is the time that you may do so.
Just stand and...
Come on up to the table here and then we, if you could please pull the mic close so those that are online can hear you well. And then go ahead and state your name. That would be...
My name is Douglas Spadine. Do you want me to spell that? It's S, V is in Victor, E is in Echo, D is in Delta, I is in India, N is in November. Now, I've lived here in Linden now for over 30 years and I love Linden. I love being here. One of the issues I have is, it's only happening within the past two, three years, maybe four, in which deer are coming around the neighborhood. And I mean, it's, it's all over and I have neighbors who have talked about it. One of my neighbors was also supposed to be here, but she got sick. And I'm just wondering what I can do to make the deer disappear. Because I call it rutting, where they come along, the bucks will come along and they'll rub their antlers against the, the trees. I've lost two trees and three other trees have been damaged. And they get into the vegetable gardens. They eat the raspberries, the grapes, the lettuce, carrots. Strawberries are gone. When, you know, neighbors, they planted new strawberries, a couple of days later, they're gone. And it's, it's costing them money. And so we're just wondering what can I do or what can we do to be able to make it so those deer are gone? Because I'm told that these deer live in the valley. They're not deer from the mountains. They were born here in the valley. And so...
Yeah, tell us where you live.
At 126 North, 550 East. I'm at the end of a cul-de-sac. We get a cowbell, we get a whistle, we go out there, we chase them off. They keep coming back. They don't, they don't care. And so we have a lot of the neighbors that have lost their gardens and everything. You know, they, they eat the leaves on the grape plants. Well, the leaves will come back, but there's no flowers, no grapes. And so that's a lot of money.
Urban deer are, it's something that all the cities along the Wasatch Front, it's been a challenge along the Wasatch Front. I don't know that there's a solution that brings population zero. But anyway, council, we've had discussions about this over the past several years. There was actually a specific ordinance, opportunity passed our city administrator. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to speak with Adam. He's very knowledgeable about what we have in place here at this point. And of course, I'll let him share that with you a little bit.
Yeah, if I can, Mayor, just, just to inform you, so if, three years ago, the city had some interest from, from the public. It's actually four years ago. And, and then we worked with the state, we adopted an urban deer removal program. There's an application fee that residents can apply for and have the site evaluated. And then if deer are removed, there's a $75 charge per animal that goes towards the processing of that animal. It was part of the state requirements. We're required to process the meat from those animals. And then they actually have to have us submit some of their brain contents for testing of chronic wasting disease. And then we're required to distribute that meat to a list of individuals who are in need of that. And so there's quite a process that's, that we have to go through and so...
With dogs and cats, they're taken away, no questions asked. But why are deer so different?
It's, it's cost the city about $2,500 per trap location. And so we hire a third-party contractor, a company that comes in and actually live traps the animal. And then when that animal is caught, they come out and euthanize that deer and then have to go through all that processing. So a lot more involved.
If it gets captured, it's killed then?
Correct. And so...
Have a relocation, but the state regulates this. It's not, you know, cities, as our own entity, we are a political subdivision of the state and they look at this as a, something that they regulate.
And so you, you can't handle it then. You have to go through the state.
But we've done an ordinance through DWR, Division of Wildlife Resources regulates all of it.
We really can't harvest them until, if we were to do something other than the traps, we really can't do anything except from August 1st through the end of the year.
The window of time.
There's a window that we can only do it. And then when really, when it's really needed is in the spring and in early summer when, like I say, with the plants. But relocation, we looked at relocating them. They have about a 25, if I recall correctly, there's about a 25% survival rate and the state won't allow relocating them anymore. And the challenge is, of course, even if we were to, you know, people were asking us at the time, well, how many deer can you get rid of? Well, first of all, we don't know exactly how many deer there are. And even if we were to get rid of half of them, we're still, I mean, I mean, the number that we're talking about makes it virtually impossible to, to even consider trying to eradicate all of them. So there's not much we can do. We've done everything that we can do based on state regulations and stuff, but we're sympathetic. We, I live up in that area too and we get a lot of them.
Does the state allow you to harvest them, like with bow hunters or something?
They do, except there's quite, I think, well, I don't think. There has to be clear, no homes, no schools, no things like that. I think within 600 feet of the...
It's a heavily regulated program.
We, we looked, we spent hours and hours and hours researching that as a council and individually. We had them come talk to us. And what we did, as far as the ordinance is concerned, is exactly what we could do. There's really nothing else that we as a council could do.
And there are other municipalities that are facing, face the same thing, same challenge as we try to do this as council members here. So I guess I would also say make sure you become really good, have good relationships with your state legislature members and talk to them about this. They need to hear from the public.
So we have to go to the state the majority of the time just to...
Yeah, the challenge, the challenge, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Here locally, we do have, so the state has basically issued the city a permit that allows us to regulate this through their process, but it's on the local level. And so if you go to our city website, it's lindencity.org, go to Departments and then Police and Fire. Click on that and here's a tab for Animal Services.
Okay.
And underneath that, you can download a copy of the Urban Deer Removal Permit Application. And so...
We get to pay $75 per deer and that could be five, six, seven, eight hundred dollars or more in my yard. Why, why keep that?
Well, that's...
Now, do we get to keep the meat?
No. The, the challenge is, that's exactly what happened. We had a lot of people who were desirous, but once, as Adam said, the traps alone cost the city $2,500 each. And that's a, that's a one-time thing, but we still paid that. People, once they found out there was a cost associated with it, we, we got no takers. But the suggestion would be have all the neighbors go in together. I mean, if you've got five or six neighbors that, that, that went together and, you know, if it's $75, if five...
And it's not per animal. It's per res, per address or is it per animal?
It's the $50 application fee and $75 per deer trapped and removed.
That's if it is trapped and removed.
If it is trapped, yeah.
And I like your suggestion, Mike.
Yeah. Yes, correct. And that's what I suggested to my, my neighborhood.
Not the one that's bothering you, but the one that's actually caught. But I like your idea, Mike.
The city fronts the $2,500 cost and the, the professionals that come and set the trap and do the study and take care of the carcass and everything. So...
What's difficult is we filled the room with people who are frustrated with this situation from across the city and we also filled the room with those who love the deer.
Well, we could build a 10-foot wall around each person who loves the deer and put the deer in their yard.
Leave them in their yard. I like that solution.
Not feasible, but we could.
Talking with some other communities that have had some urban deer removal programs, one of the things that I've learned chatting with some of them is they remove so many individuals from the population, but then there's, you know, they have offspring the next season and it's kind of just like a, a constant, here they are, then they're down, then they're here, then they're down. It, it, they didn't see necessarily an overall...
Decrease.
Decrease that stays. Does that make sense? So that's one of the challenges too.
We have them fawning in people's backyards, deer being born in their backyards.
And some people love it.
Yes.
Yeah, some people love it, some people...
We do have an ordinance in the city that you may not feed the deer. That sometimes is, is an issue, you know, over wintering. Some people sympathize and want, so that's something we don't want to have them encouraging.
Yeah, but they eat our vegetables and our fruits and...
In the wintertime though, they...
Frustrating is you're not super high on the mountain where sometimes we see them. You're pretty low.
Yes, yes, I am.
Where they'll traverse back up. Yeah, I think in years past, I remember when I lived on the east side of the city when we first moved here nearly 30 years ago, the herds would kind of come da, up and down off the mountain somewhat. But like you're saying, what the communities are seeing is the humans have filled the deer's habitat. They're starting to stay in these smaller pockets where they've kind of been acclimated to the humans in our homes. And they love the, what they can forage. So...
So just a couple of points of clarification for, for you and for the city council. So as, as a reminder then, per our application, our permit as a city, the state only allows the deer to be removed between August 1st and December 31st. They have talked to us recently, DWR, and they want to shorten that. They have talked to us recently, DWR, and they want to shorten that window. And, um, and so they were talking one or two months, um, on a, on a harvest season. Um, I, I think it was October, was that, was that? September and October-ish. So, um, we are at the third year of our permit, so it actually ran its course. And the chief is working right now with the state to renew our permit. And so we'll go another three years and see what happens. But. So there is a process in place, but there's a lot of strings there.
Okay. Well, I'll see what I can do about it in my neighborhood.
Time's coming up. Your timing's not too bad where it's coming right up. If you could get several neighbors together, pool resources, find the best spot. That'd be an option.
Okay.
Hey, well, thanks.
You'd be the pilot program. We've, we've yet to have someone take us up on it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Do we have any other, uh, public comment for an item that is not on the agenda this evening? Okay, very good. We'll move on to item number four. This is our council reports. Uh, and Daryl, would you like to kick us off this evening?
Be happy to. Uh, those who are here, we have Lyndon Days coming up on July thirtieth through August sixth. We encourage anyone to participate where there's an interest. You can go to the lyndoncity.org and look under Lyndon Days and see a detailed structure of that. But we've got a few things that are exciting this year. One is a concert in the park on, that first Sunday on the thirty-first of July. And the car show is in process. The applications are low there, but I've been told by Heath today that that is common. That they'll sign up here in the next week or so and we'll have a good turnout, probably close to three hundred cars. Ice cream social, there's a parade on Friday, the fifth, and uh, we have a breakfast on Saturday that the police and fire are going to, um, coordinate in the fire department with the city council. And we're excited for that. And this year we're trying to, to provide it for free this year. And to see if we can get a big, bigger number. So we encourage you to come out.
And something also, Daryl, I might add to that. The, uh, general plan committee will have information there as well. And what they're working on to get, as a feedback point from the community as well. So.
Also ballot tour the facility there as well and get acquainted with the police and fire.
Kids can come see the fire trucks.
I like that. It's a good idea.
That, uh, celebration on Saturday evening with a concert and fireworks. That's all I have.
Thank you. And those will be posted with links. And right now you can go on and see those, that scheduled events on the city website. So.
Would you decide for us, Daryl, on, on parade rides?
Can't remember his last name, Carson. Um, he was across the street from my pizza factory. He has, uh, horses in a nice, uh, wagon that he will pull for us. And he says there's at least room for at least a dozen people. So we just need to determine who wants to be on that. And some of us could walk if we wanted to. So that's the plan at this point. That work for everybody?
I wonder what my choice would be.
I've earned the right to ride.
Randy, I'm trying to get the, so Brent Brown, I'm still talking. I'll chat with you after. I might have an option for us to write in. If that's difficult to get up. Okay.
Yeah, I can get in.
Oh, you could?
I can get up.
All right.
I'll get up.
Excellent.
Exciting. Best week of the year.
All right.
All right, thank you. Um, this is more informational than anything and, uh, maybe should have called Jake on this, but, uh, some citizens have reached out to me about the pool. And I took the liberty of calling Alan um, and just chatting with him. But the issues were twofold. One was the hot tub has been broken for most of the season, if not all of the season. And, and Adam.
That's last year.
Yeah, and Adam has, or not Adam, pardon me, Alan, has mentioned that, uh, which is not uncommon this day and age, is they just can't get a part for it. They're trying to order the part and, um, I think the supplier's trying to find it. They, I think they tried to fix it, but they haven't been able to do that. Uh, so anyway, it's, it's on the agenda. They're doing what they can to do that. So they're aware of it, of course. Uh, they also were talking about the, the quality and the amount of, uh, concessions that were available. I know we had experiences, not a big deal. We, my wife stood in line for like twenty-plus minutes and get up there and then they're out of a lot of things. They're out of hot dogs, they're out of, uh, nachos and so forth, which is a great challenge to have. But what I discovered is they don't, I guess the place where they serve them was not built to serve warm food. Apparently it was built like according to Alan to like prepackaged stuff, like chips and, you know, popsicles or whatever. So the, the challenge there is perhaps getting another refrigerator or freezer or something. And he's going to look into that and see if there's a, a way that they can increase the availability of the concessions and so forth. And then the other thing was the ice cream machine, but I guess that's been fixed. So, so that's good. Again, nothing, nothing major, but I thought it would be worth mentioning. And, um, I know that Alan is very good at what he does. And the pool just keeps on keeping on. I just can't get enough good comments from citizens, even outside the city, how much they enjoy the pool and and, um, what a great facility it is. So I think the new slide's been a hit. So, um, the other thing is, um, we took the liberty of going to the first, um, farmer's market. The other, the other, uh, was it Thursday?
Yes.
Yeah, Thursday.
Had its second one.
Really, really enjoyed it. Uh, Kelly Johnson's kids, girls were there selling some homemade crafts and stuff. So we bought some stuff from them and, uh, I thought for the first one, it was a pretty, pretty darn good turnout. And, uh, so it's exciting that we, we've got that going on. So, um, in terms of, uh, again, North Point Solid Waste District is, everything's great. Uh, no, no, nothing to report there. General Plan Committee, Mike and, um, Mary are knocking out of the park each week or each time we meet. So, so we appreciate that. And, uh, I don't think there's anything else that I have to report.
Thank you, Councilmember Ben Cherry. All right, I'll try to be really quick here. Uh, Farmer's Market, like Mike said, is going fantastic. Um, the Carters who are running that with Sunset Farmer's Market said that the vendors were very encouraged. They have huge amount of vendors that they service with some other communities. And when they came and saw how well ours was supported with our community, that more vendors are wanting to come. So it's going to be growing. Um, we did talk about in, uh, the engineering meeting, um, with our engineers and public works. Uh, just parking is already really tight. We've lost the overflow field where Tag and Go, those other businesses are going in. So they're going to be kind of, you know, Trent and I are going to be looking at that site to see where maybe some low-hanging fruit might be to re-stripe the parking and, and help with that. And that's something maybe we could have for discussion later. Um, you know, Heath said the car show is so big and do we move it to another site in the future? We can talk about and see how that goes or maybe make, find some other ways to i- improve the parking there. Certainly with the arena improvements that are happening, there's possibilities on that end down the fu- future. So just kind of watch during Lyndon Days and let's all kind of get some feedback on that so we can make the most of those community events. Um, and then I attended the American Fort Canyon Group. A quick update, the fiber was completed. It's what I reported on last time. Um, they now, um, are going to start towing. They've had just an enormous amount of folks heading up in the canyon throughout the week and especially the weekends. And parking has become an issue. And, um, there's individuals who are okay with just paying a parking ticket each time they come. And they're creating some safety issues. So heads up, they've never towed before, but now that there's fiber, they said if you get towed, your cell phone will work to call for help. So. Okay. Um, and they were talking about, you know, fees and things like that with the Forest Service. So one of the things that's a concern, you know, with COVID, people are getting outside more, which is fantastic. But not everybody is being responsible and, you know, being wise stewards of their trash or what they're doing and with one another. So just get the word out and, you know, like our trailhead here at Dry Ke- Creek, um, you know, pulling down furniture and garbage off of our Bonneville Shoreline Trail, um, those types of things. Let's try to help all be, get the word out with the younger generation and with anyone who likes to use those spaces to, you know, pitch in and be good with that. So, um, we also had a, a band, kind of a concert series. It's going on this summer. We're not doing it the same night as Farmer's Market. It's usually a Friday, farmers are Thursdays, those will be Fridays. So look out for those. There's going to be quite a few more. Um, we have some bands that have offered to come perform and see how we like having that type of a program in our community. Um, and really quickly, we had a couple ribbon cutting openings. Thanks to council members that were able to pop by. We have some really awesome businesses coming to the community. Besides Tag and Go, we have Elite Turf that joined the chamber as well. And, uh, really excited. Uh, we had some of our staff there, Mike Florence, Juan Grito, and impressive product. I think there's some possibilities there to talk with them about maybe retrofitting some of our actual grass with some of their turf product, which has really come a long way, looks beautiful, has a long warranty. Could save on watering, maybe having some sites where we can feature that and, um, try that out in some places. Um, especially sites where maybe the public isn't using it as a park. It's, we're one of our, uh, yeah, exactly. Okay. And, uh, that's all I have for now. So turn it over to Jake.
Busy, busy. Um, parks, trails and rec. Uh, met with Alan and Heath both. Pool's been hitting full capacity on several days. Uh, this hot weather has been great for the pool, for people coming in, revenues. Um, our pool, Lyndon City Pool Party's coming up. I think you received an email today. July twenty-second at six-thirty. Please RSVP if you're going to make it. Uh, attended the Farmer's Market, ran into the mayor there and bought some chips and salsa and some deep-fried Skittles. I highly rec- no, freeze-dried Skittles. Highly rec- highly recommend it. Highly recommend it. In fact, I might bring some next council meeting. Um, met with John Tucker, water master, um, friend of mine, uh, wasn't on an official business, but ran into him. We got to chatting. Sounds like we're around eighty percent flow. My high, my low? It's been about, been about a week. So, um, it's a hot, dry summer, a little bit of rain here and there, but, uh, I think we're doing okay there. Uh, appreciate chief who keeps me updated with, uh, emails about every two weeks on, on where they're at. Um, lot going on, busy police department. Um, you know, one thing I would bring up from his last email, quite a bit of activity at the Dry Canyon Parking Lot. Um, a couple of different things up there, some sad things. And they're working on maybe some possible, uh, surveillance camera items up there. So anyways, um, appreciate chief, appreciate all he does. Excited for Lyndon Days. And I think that's all I've got.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Are things kind of quiet for me because I've been down for my second bout of COVID. So.
Welcome back. Welcome back. It'd be nice to be among the living again and out from underneath rocks.
Um, but, uh, most of what I've been dealing, uh, on my assignments, um, was presented tonight, um, with Cert. Kelly is, no, Kelly's not there, that's Mary. Um, uh, has, just does a fabulous job for our city. So proud to associate with her. She also works with, um, our youth council and we've got it coming up. Um, and I, I have a little bit of emotion because, only a little, because I was not in attendance to the meeting because of my sickness. Um, we've got a life hack. It's coming up for teens, coming up in September. So anyone who knows teens, we need to have your ears perk up. So in September, you can put this on your calendar. More information will be coming. But our youth council is doing an amazing job. We're working on a few projects. And we've just got wonderful kids that are dealing with, um, going to school and family and still wanting to serve their community. So what a blessing that is for our city. Um, I guess, uh, don't have a lot more to say. Um, the senior center's going just lovely and everything. Um, wish I could have made to the Farmer's Market two Thursdays in a row. I had to sit home on my hands and not contaminate anybody. So I stayed home and did the, the responsible thing, but I'm looking forward to this Thursday going and enjoying that. Um, have, and I spread the word every pla- chance I can get. And I encourage everyone else to spread the word as much as you can to help this be a successful event, um, ongoing event for our city. And, um, question for Adam, because I didn't see on your administrator report and I've missed. Uh, what is going on with the front of our building and how are we going to make it beautiful and what's going to be added there?
So we budgeted, um, actually last year, and it's carried forward to redo the landscaping out there. It'll be some red rocks there escaping with some new plants and vegetation. And we had a lot of plants that were dying or not in good condition. And so.
Overgrown.
So this is an effort to replace some of that with a more water-wise landscape. So.
Are we completely done with our roof?
I believe so. Yes.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor, I have just one comment. I forgot. Uh, this doesn't directly impact us, but, um, we took our boat uh, last week down to the Lyndon Harbor. And, and it wasn't worth the risk of trying to launch the boat. The water is so low that there were no boats there. Uh, and I can only imagine it's going to get more challenging. Uh, so, you know, I don't know what that's doing for our campground there and so forth. But I noticed they did have put up some of the park units is what I call them, with the little tiny, tiny homes on wheels. They've actually moved those over and incorporated those into the camping area. And it actually looks quite nice. And they seem to have a pretty good, pretty good clientele. But if you're interested in going down to the lake and boating, I might take a rain check if I were you. So.
Or maybe access a different harbor.
Well, I'm told that even Provo is, is exceedingly shallow, but we haven't tried that yet. But, or Deer Creek.
Still good fishing there.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, administrator's report.
Um, just a couple of quick items. So we have on Wednesday, July twenty-seventh at six o'clock PM here in this room, a joint meeting with the general plan committee, the city council and the planning commission. So just keep that on your calendar. And then a note there on September twelfth, we had this joint social with some other cities, uh, council members. But we realized that's on the night of our drill. Thanks, Mayor, for that heads up. So we'll reschedule that. So. Daryl, you okay there? Okay, I'll coordinate with you.
Get a email going to find out when, when you all are available for a reschedule before we reach out to the other councils and mayors.
Yeah, I can do that. So.
That'd be helpful. Cause I'd love to have as much of our, since we're hosting the event. It's our turn to host.
What if we look at that last Monday in September? Is that to be the fourth? That is the twenty-sixth? And we were thinking in the community center. So I'll have to double check on our room there. Does that work?
Say it one more time. I'm sorry.
Uh, September twenty-sixth.
September twenty-sixth. And that'll be the joint meeting.
Monday or Tuesday? Do you want to give, give availability on a couple of dates?
Tuesday would be a plan.
I know some of the other cities meet on Tuesday nights. And so I don't know.
Planning commi- this won't be with the planning commission. Will it? It's just councils.
They, they will be meeting.
But I mean, as far as our inner, inter-city meeting.
Monday, no, because. Planning mission meets on a Tuesday night.
Okay.
On Monday, you're busy?
Tuesdays, I'm busy.
Okay, Monday's great then.
Okay. I'll send that out and I'll see what kind of response I get. So.
Thank you very much.
You know, Mayor, in the meantime, I know that Van is, is indisposed. And Daryl asked to be, would it be helpful to have me, I attend some of the planning commission meetings just until Van's up and.
That would be great. Yeah.
Are you the alternate for him?
And that, or who's the alternate for planning?
I think I'm the alternate for you.
I'm not on the planning commission anymore. So.
Yeah, we had that re- that shuffled around a bit.
Sure.
Where's, where's that list of alternates? I think I'm Van's.
Uh, I'll have to pull that up.
Well, I could do that for a while.
So I attended the last, um, planning commission meeting. We, we rea- thank you, council, for, uh, re- renewing or reappointing Renee Tribe to her second term and Steve Johnson to his third, I believe. So, um. Done some great service there with them.
I'll find that out and email that out to you guys on who's Van's back up there. So.
All right, very good. Anything else?
Um, that's really all I have that I think we need to go over. Uh, oh, sorry, one more, just an FYI, Heath is off until the day before Lyndon Day starts. And so if you have any questions about Lyndon Days, Alan or Jamie Jensen at our community center are the two best to ask. And then all of the events, the times, locations are all on the city website. There's a tab for Lyndon Days and it'll take you to that page. And so just an FYI, he's, he is out of town until.
For him?
The thirtieth. So.
I texted him earlier today and said, I'm just getting on a plane. He didn't elaborate, but.
Yeah. So I, I think he's doing a church history tour. So he's.
What a recreation director do to record it?
Church history tour, apparently.
Something his wife wanted to do. Bucket list.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're on to item number six. It's the approval of the minutes. Uh, council, do you have any corrections? Council, do you have any corrections or updates for our recorder? And if not, I'll...
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 20, 2022.
Hey, we have a motion by council member Magalby, seconded by council member Van Sherry, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that is unanimous. Okay, item number seven. This is a consent agenda, we have a number of items here that do not require public comment. These are more or less housekeeping type of items. And I will turn it over to you, Adam.
Just a really quick overview, this municipal wastewater planning program, it's something the state requires us to show the city council, and basically you're just acknowledging that we did it, and it's for the prior year. And so we've actually seen this every year for the last several years. The UDOT landscape agreement, they're asking us to sign this, and this is nonspecific. It's a citywide landscape maintenance agreement. UDOT doesn't maintain anything, is basically what this agreement says. And so it's all on us if we want to have landscaping, or on the property owners that abut these state roadways. The interlocal agreement with North Utah County Aquifer Council is something that Juan's recommending that we participate in this. This is primarily just North Utah County cities, and they're studying recharge efforts and some of the aquifer levels. And so we felt like that was prudent, that we'd be participating there. And then Central Utah Water Concernancy District is part of that as well. We have a surplus equipment disposal, some light bollards, and well-used vehicle, and then two appointments, reappointments to the planning commission.
I've reviewed those, very comfortable with all of the items. I'll move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion, and second, any further discussion? Questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes, that was a motion by council member Hoyt, and seconded by council member Powell.
I'm sorry, I did have one question, I forgot. On that Aquifer Council, if I read it correctly, do you serve on that?
The what?
The Aquifer Council, or is that Juan? You'll serve on that, representative?
And I have to give kudos to Juan. He is, he is just so on the ball with these, with the issues of retrofitting the city, getting our capital infrastructure, you know, everything up to speed with what we're dealing with. How are, by the way, how are the meters going for those of you that are... I have a meter on my house, and I am really grateful, you know. When I learned that we have 87 miles of sewer, you know, these guys are, there was a break a couple week, the other week, and they were on, they came after hours and fixed it for some residents in the community that contacted me and the city, and they fixed it after hours. These guys are just 24/7. And I discovered with my meter, you know, I've always thought I'm a very conscientious with watering my yard, I had an invisible leak of about 50 gallons a day. So we spent our entire Saturday digging and replacing, and that, it's really cool because there's an app. You can see in the meter itself, it'll tell you your exact usage, or if there's an ongoing leak. You have an app on your phone, it's really cool. I've really liked it, so, thank you.
So when are you gonna come break out my concrete, Juan?
We might be glad to those other guys.
Mine's underneath cement.
That'll be lots of fun. Okay, all right, so we're moving forward to item number eight. This is a review and action for the Temple Town Plat A for a lot major subdivision. All right. So we'll go ahead and have this presented by our Mary Barnes, thank you, Mary.
Thank you. And our applicant today is David Friar. You wanna come sit up the front here, just in case there's any questions?
My favorite.
This is the redheaded wonder.
Oh, thank you. That's his nickname for me.
Love it.
I married a redhead as well.
Is it the redheaded wonder?
I'd like to make one comment that has nothing to do with my subdivision, but it has to do with this gentleman when we walked in, was talking about his deer problem. I'm sure you all remember the winter of 1949.
I'm sure we do.
Yes, I do, but remind us just...
Yes, please refresh our memories.
Thank you.
In Linden City, there was three feet of snow on the ground. We owned a dry farm at that time over the Bernock Canal, and that winter, we went up with an uncle, my dad and an uncle, and some of my cousins, and stood on that dry farm that we had, and counted over a thousand head of deer.
Four thousand.
Off of Temponogus Mountain, down into the orchards in Linden. And the farmers at that time, they had a control system, they had all had shotguns. And you couldn't walk 30 feet in any direction in any of those orchards without finding a dead deer. So, we don't have it quite as bad now, but we got a deer problem over in Pleasant Grove where we are.
All right. Thank you for sharing that. All right, Mary.
All right, so Mr. Friar, Mr. and Mrs. Friar have applied for a full-up major subdivision on his property at approximately 150 East and 800 North bordering Pleasant Grove. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval for this project on June 14. This parcel is currently a completely vacant, almost two-acre lot. This project is unique because of the proximity to Pleasant Grove and the canal on the southwest end of the property, so I'll be talking about both of those aspects. The road, 800 North in Linden, and I, 800, oh, 1,000 South, sorry, in Pleasant Grove. It's owned by Pleasant Grove, so we have an agreement with them regarding the utilities that will be provided for these lots. Our city engineer is still working with them on the exact utilities, how that's gonna be divided out. And then the, so the, oh, all of the, all of the homes will be fronting onto 800 North, even Lot 4 over here, that's next to 200 East. So the lot sizes, they raise, they range from 27,000 to 20,000 square feet. And the surrounding area is all residential, so it'll just fit right in to the, to the area. Lot 1 has the most interaction with the existing canal right here. It's, this section of the canal is actually owned by the Pleasant Grove Irrigation Company. So we've contacted them and made them aware of this subdivision, and they've provided some comments. So on this plat, there is this easement for the canal, and everything south of this line will be, you know, will be used for maintenance for the canal, there won't be any construction. Actually, in the easement, and Pleasant Grove Irrigation Company also required no planting, so no, no trees or, you know, deep-rooted vegetation right there, so they can easily maintain the canal. Which is piped, I should say. Yeah, thanks, Randy. It's just pipes. So this leaves, so because that construction is prohibited right here, that leaves about 18,000 square feet of buildable, not buildable area, but 18,000 square feet to fit a home into. And the planning commission was concerned that with setbacks, would there still be able to be a home built on this lot? And I looked at it today, and yes, there will be, be able to have a pretty good-sized home on this lot. The main thing that is still needed on this plat that we have with Dave Friar's engineers for corrections is just these side lot lines need. There are 7.5 PUEs, and there is curb and gutter on this side of, I guess, 100 South Street in Pleasant Grove. Therefore, we will be requiring curb gutter sidewalk all along 800 North and for this section of 200 East. So with that, we recommend major subdivision approval for Temple Town Plat A. And do you have any questions?
I have a question for you good folks. Are these gonna be for sale, or are these family?
What was that again?
I'm sorry, are these lots for sale, are there family, family occupied?
Well, they're gonna be for sale, and we want to put some real high-end home on these lots, because most of the ones on the Linden side are, it's a real nice neighborhood, and we want to continue that, so...
Well, the reason I ask is that we, I'm sure all of us do, but frequently get calls from people looking for lots about this size, and true to fore, they haven't had very many available, so...
Yeah, they will be available, I don't think I can sell anything until it's all approved and developed, so...
Sure, okay.
There is one little thing that you should understand, you see that little diagonal line going on that one lot? From that little jagged corner? That kind of represents the canal, but the canal doesn't follow that line. It's a curve that comes from that little notch down there on the bottom. And that curves, and then goes up to that corner, so there is quite a bit more building space other than on that straight line, because it's not a straight line. It's a, it's a curved, curved buried pipe. Used to be an open, open ditch, and then they went in there and put like a 20-inch pipe inside the concrete ditch, and then just covered it, so... So that's, is really a very accurate...
So is that something, then, Mary, I guess I'd ask, that if that were surveyed and then put onto the plat, that somebody could use a little bit more square footage toward the northeast of that line?
Yes.
If it was surveyed and then included on the plat?
Yeah, so I've, I've given Dave and Dave's engineer, his name's also Dave, the contact information for Pleasant Grove Irrigation Company, so they can talk about where...
To get the exact placement?
To get the exact, you know, boundaries of the canal, how much easement they need, that kind of thing. So that'll be worked out later on with staff, most likely.
We was only able to put like, we had like 285 apple trees on this two-acre parcel. In that corner where the ditch was, we was able to put just 10 apple trees in that corner, so it's not nearly as big as that triangle that we're looking at.
Tori, have any other questions, council?
No.
Any relation to the late Afton Friar?
What was that?
Are you any relation to the late Afton Friar?
Oh, yeah, Afton, yeah, that's, Afton was my, was married to my dad's brother, Sam.
Okay. Well, we are very grateful to her, when she, she left an endowment of a park for our community, as well as helped fund our community center purchase, so, appreciate it.
Our relatives actually owned most of the northeast corner of Linden.
Right.
And farmed that for many, many years.
Right.
So, this piece of property right here goes probably back over 100...
Right, I was, I believe since the Civil War. There were 160-acre Civil War, post-Civil War grants, or something like that, someone was telling me.
During the Civil War?
Civil, after the Civil War, there were 160-acre parcel grants to different individuals in this area. Yeah. Well, very good. All right, council, any other questions?
I just have a question, this is not on the record, but how long you good folks been married?
Well, it'll be 60 years in...
In February.
In February.
That's awesome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That is a real testament of the redheaded wonder. Love for a redheaded wonder. She's kept it...
Five out of my six children are redheads also, so...
Five of the six children are redheads, and we have redheaded grandchildren and great-grandchildren.
All right.
Fire that has spread, that's wonderful.
Well, this property has been a little, you know, a little, little wilder of late, so I would imagine this, you know, this'll provide some beautiful lots for folks who really want to live in our community.
It just kind of finishes out that end of...
Finish out that corner.
Very excited.
The name we gave, it might attract some, some good people, want to do it also.
It should do a good job.
Kind of named it that a year ago, I guess.
Okay, all right.
Make a motion?
Yes, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Temple Town Plat A subdivision as presented.
All right, we have a motion by council member Magalby, do we have a second?
As we search for a second here, just really quick, I have to say that this is one of the first times I've seen my, our council, not my council, but my fellow council members almost arm wrestle to make this. We've all just been licking our chops to make this motion, so you, you, you're being really gobbled up by our council. So I will now, I've said my piece, I will leave the second out there for us.
I will second.
Seconded by council member Van Sherry, we will now have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that is a resounding unanimous. Yes, that passes, thank you. And thank you to our, our staff.
Thanks, Mary.
Our planner, Mary, for giving fine information and continuing to help with that unique piece of property and the issues that are there.
You too, take care.
All right, item number nine, this is a discussion item. This is something that our community development director, Michael Florence, will present, and he did a fantastic job presenting this to our planning commission and getting them apprised, and some healthy discussion, and so I'm looking forward to that tonight as well with our council. This is the moderate income housing strategies.
Thank you, mayor. It's one of our favorite topics, talk about housing, and so... So just a quick background on some requirements from the legislature. So here's a, just what this legislature says, we have to, the city is required to look at strategies that will help implement housing policy in our community for those at the 80%, making 80% or less of the area, area median income. So in 2019, the senate, or the legislature passed Senate Bill 34, which required us to pass a new housing, a modern income housing plan. We had to adopt strategies for that. The Linden Council adopted five housing strategies in that plan. Those were to create or allow for, and reduce regulations related to accessory dwelling units in residential zones, reduce impact fees related to low and moderate income housing. We actually did that in 2011, when we reduced the parks' impact fee from 4,500 to 1,500 for accessory apartments, and then the legislature took that away this past, last year, for accessory apartments. Preserve existing modern income housing. We own these three homes right up here on the, on Main Street. We've, we rent those for a modern income housing level, or rent. Utilize strategies that preserve subsidized to low to modern income units along, on a long-term basis. Those, the, the housing units there at Hollow Park, we have a 99-year lease with the Housing Authority on those for housing for people with disabilities, and then allow for alternative housing types in modern income residential development in commercial and mixed-use zones, commercial centers, employment centers. So that was kind of the, what led to our, amending our planned residential development ordinance that we're also gonna talk about tonight. So, just to update you, in 2022, the legislature passed House Bill 462 that requires us by this October to update our modern income housing plan, to now look at updated strategies that they adopted. We have to now incorporate an implementation plan that includes timelines and benchmarks for these strategies. We have to pass three of them at a minimum. If we pass five, then we get additional priority for some transportation funds. Those are mainly for state roads and transportation areas for, for public transportation. So just to go through quickly, modern income, or what that modern income housing looks like. So it's all based off of the county area median income for Utah County. The Utah County AMI is 77,000, and so we're, 80% of that is 61,600. So that's the housing area we're looking at. All cities are based off the same thing in Utah County. If you look at 30%, that's what banks and loan officers recommend, that you not spend more than 30% of your income off housing. So that puts it right around 18,500. So that would be a monthly housing cost of about $1,500. That, that would include your mortgage, your utilities, your insurance. If you look at the median home price in Utah County, as in March, it was 589,000. That was, you know, a year earlier, it was 456,000. You know, I read a report, or an article yesterday on KSL.com saying that, you know, housing prices are slowly coming down. You know, and, and so, you know, but these are the numbers we're looking at, all based off that 80% AMI. I just used one of the loan calculators on, on a, on a bank. I just used one of the loan calculators on, on a, on a bank, just ran, you know, what that looks like. So if you were to take out a loan for 304,000, you know, this was, this loan rate was from June, and so it was 5.3%. Your monthly payment would be $1,500, and that's a $30,000 down payment on a 30-year loan. And so, you know, that's, that's kind of the, where that 1541, I just based it off of that, you know, not spending more than 30% of your income.
But that, does that include taxes and insurance? That payment doesn't, right?
Does. If I go back to the previous slide, that's where I, so that's where I came, I just divided 1840, 18,000 by 12, came up with the 1541, and said that's what you use for, so your mortgage payment would be less than that.
Right.
If you're including utilities and insurance and.
I'm saying on the next slide, what you calculated, does that include?
That does not. Nope. That one doesn't.
So that would need, I mean essentially for it to meet moderate income housing criteria, we're talking about a purchase price of even less than that, right? So a $300,000 house is what meets the criteria.
Yeah. Yep, you're right.
Doesn't exist.
Center in 4th East is $400,000.
Yeah, I just pulled up on utarrealstate.com.
It said nothing.
There was one home for, in this area, 319,000. I don't know anything about it. I didn't look at location, I mean, the actual homes, but, you know, most of them were, you know, in that 6, 7, 800,000 range. If you looked at what, this is from June, so this is a little, the status is a little old. But if you, you know, even looking at rents, there was three rentals in Linden that were available between 1500 and 2100 a month. So the state doesn't care if you're buying a home or renting a home. They just, they don't make that difference. They just said you gotta provide housing in that moderate income area, level area. So with that, your staff report, we, we've worked with the General Plan Committee, and they gave us some recommendations. We worked with the Planning Commission last week. So what I did is I highlighted in, in green, some of those strategies, I think, that are easy to accomplish. So that first one is to create or allow for and reduce regulations related to internal or detached accessory dwelling units in residential zones. So we're already doing that. The state says we can already count that retroactively, so we've got one already. Second one would be eliminate impact fees for any accessory dwelling unit that is not an internal accessory dwelling unit. And so the state already mandated, we can't, we can't count, or we can't apply impact fees to accessory dwelling units. If we, if we don't apply it to detached, you know, in the last five years, we've approved three detached accessory dwelling units. This might incentivize some more. That impact fee is about $1,800. That's not going to be a huge hit to the city. We implement, we apply a parks' impact fee and public safety impact fee. And so that, that would be a second one that could be easy to apply. Another green one would be utilizing strategies from our RDA areas. And so we have two RDA areas. We've got the 700 North. That area requires that we set aside 5% for housing in that area, which is about, if I did my calculations right, it could be up to about $100,000. We also have the Linden Park area that we just created. We have to keep 10% of housing in that area, and that'll be about $10,000. And so that area.
To clarify, the funds can be applied to any location in the city?
Only the Linden Park. The 700 North has to be used for that area.
In that area.
So you could take the Linden Park, that 10,000, and move it over to 700 North. And so that, I think this is an easy strategy as well. You could work with a developer to, you know, if we help them with some public improvements, they set aside some units for modern income housing. Those units would need to be deed restricted or something like that. But that, that would be, you know, the money is there or will be there. We haven't collected it yet. But it, it would be there in the future to, to help with modern income housing, some set aside for that. So those, those would be three that I think you could go, those would be kind of some low-hanging fruit ones that could have a good impact. We've seen some good success with accessory apartments. Another one would be to, in this yellow one, reduce, waive, or eliminate impact fees related to modern income housing. So you could say, you know, for any modern income housing unit, we, we could waive the fees. Now that, that, for a single family, that could get expensive. We, we charge about $8,200 for a single-family detached or, or townhome. If it's on an individual lot, that's what we charge for an impact fee. If you look at something like Avalon, they paid about $200,000 for those 90 units in impact fees, which was about, I think I wrote it down, $2,200 in impact fees per unit and $2,300. And so that's something we could look at as well, you know, if we wanted to go above three, to hit that five mark for a number of strategies. Others, this other one in yellow, zone or rezone for higher density or modern income residential development, commercial or mixed-use zones near major transit investment corridors. So the trend, major transit investment corridor is a front-runner station, a track station, or a BRT station. Commercial cor, or, commercial centers or employment centers. This would be another one. We, we've kind of done this with planned residential development overlay. This is, but this is something we'd be, we'd have to be willing to do in the future again, is, is to zone or rezone for higher density or modern income residential development.
Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you have a transit node, one of those three, BRT or the tracks or whatever it might be, doesn't the statute require that you have a certain amount of low and moderate income housing, or at least multifamily housing?
Yeah, you have to do a small area plan, depending on if it's BRT or light rail or front-runner, the area changes. I think it's a quarter mile. If it's a BRT, you have to do a study. We don't have to do that now because we don't have any stations, but. And then the other one would be, this other one in yellow is something to consider. Preserve existing and new modern income housing and subsidized units by utilizing a landlord incentive program, providing for deed-restricted units or a grant program. Another related one to that would be to incentivize or implement zoning incentives for modern income housing units and new developments. What, what's something you could do with that one is say, we're going to give a, you know, a 10% increase in density if you provide those units as modern income housing. So for example, if someone's coming in, they want 50 units, you could say, okay, fine, but you gotta give 10%, which would be five units, set aside for modern income housing, and you put deed restrict that. So the, so yell, so green is something I think we should consider. Yellow are some, are just ideas or options. So as you look, the state gave us 24 strategies. They're, they're highlighted on this next page, all in yellow. But the, the plan is, I'd like to get some direction from you tonight. Hold a public hearing with the Planning Commission in August, on August 9th. Bring this back to you in September for your approval, since we have to have this updated by October, October 1st. So with that, I'd love some feedback on strategies you think we should pursue or throw out or.
I, I'm wearing my Van hat tonight, and I know what he would be asking, I believe, would be. In our current, this is a report that we're required to do periodically, as you mentioned. Where do we stand right now if we were to, you know, as the number of items that they're requiring us to do? What boxes are checked? That's a great way.
So really, your only, your only one you're doing right now is, that would, can roll over, is the accessory apartments. Let me go back to that. So number, so I provided, you know, your five strategies that you have and then the discussion about those. So here's the previous ordinance, the 2019 strategy, and here's how it changed. So the accessory apartments one, that one still applies. This one, we, I don't think we can count any longer that in 2011, we reduced the impact fee for parks. They're looking for something that you're implementing, because you have to implement, have an implementation plan and a bench timeline and a benchmark. So how are you moving forward? So we, we probably can't count that from 2011 any longer. So we, about preserving the three we have, homes we have up here, that's great. But the legislature changed this to say, preserving existing and new modern income housing. So how, how are we going to, what would we do to preserve new modern income housing? What strategy would we come up for that, with that?
What do cities do that don't have the land to do that? That's my general question that nobody needs to really answer, but just gonna throw that out.
Yeah.
Tear downs the big current homes.
The things that the planning commissioners, there was kind of a discussion around was, you know, sharing how the councils had discussions about, we have all these accessory apartments. We're not aware of the total inventory that we have, or if they are already meeting some modern income housing objectives vis-à-vis, you know, charging those amounts that are, that fall within those guidelines. And could one of our strategies be that we present that, you know, we already eliminated, you know, the parking requirement for two off-street down to one, but like Mike said, that's kind of a, we're past that point. But are there things we could do with our Phil Brown's department to have sort of a opportunity for residents to have less barriers to come forward and maybe get those approved? If they had worries about, not just the, the impact fee, but the, which is no longer a problem, but the, you know, maybe they have issues within what they finished that didn't.
And that's kind of what I put down as benchmark options up there was establish that baseline, you know, here's how many we have. And then work with Brian to see if there's some type of program we can put in place to, you know, some.
Kind of an amnesty sort of.
Amnesty or whatever, to, to see if people can come in and say, okay, this is how many we really have.
Have it, have them inspected, but maybe be a little softer on.
Think that's still just as part of that strategy is, is for the accessory apartment ordinance.
Well, Mike, my recollection is that just the, the act of encouraging and approving accessory dwelling units meets the requirement. There's no specific rent requirements. In other words, you don't have to be with that, under that $1,500 or $1,541 or less. Just the fact that you've created them and encouraged them and have taken some of the barriers away. There's no rent restriction on what you can charge. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that's what I remember.
Help me understand the money we're talking about here. I hate that the state is tying apples and oranges together. Help me understand. By meaning two versus meaning five, what type of money are we talking about from the state transportation funds?
You know, I, I'm not sure.
So this would be things that MAG administers federal funds to regional projects. And so we've applied for some things in the past. A couple of things would be the Heritage Trail. The funding that we got for that is technically transportation funds that set aside the trails. The widening of Geneva and 200 South, that signal intersection that we've been working on, that would be another one. We've applied in the past for, let's see.
It's anything that increases capacity.
Yeah, it's anything that, that increases capacity, decreases congestion, or improves air quality, mitigation type of projects. We've had multiple meetings. Yeah. And, and doing two versus doing five puts you in a different priority?
Is it three?
Yeah, three versus.
They have a scoring sheet, basically, that they rank those projects. We would get fewer points. What projects do we have on the horizon that would qualify for these funds? 1,600 North? Traffic signals are the big thing of you that we could apply to have those. Yeah, 700 North, 710 West. There's, there's four or five projects, just traffic signals. That would put us in a lower, lower priority. Other long-term ones that, this isn't near-term, this is long-term. 1,200 East connecting that somehow in the future along the top.
Then your connector, whenever it.
Yeah.
So that's long-term.
Some of these are, it's not that we have a list per se, Jake. It might be. No, that's helpful. In a year, we might say, hey, this is a problem spot. Let's apply for mitigation funding, so.
One of the things I would like to ask the council, you know, some of the commissioners brought this up as well. One of the things that I've always wished was, could we have some sort of an incentive for more of our own employees to live within the city? Many of them would like to live in Linden, but they can't afford to live Linden. And if we ever had any particular emergency event, you know, we've, we've learned in different situations that people are going to take care of house and home where they are in their immediate, and if they live 30 minutes away, anyway, there's.
Do you have preference, any sort of preference for the three rentals that we have that?
That's one thing I was wondering, would we, could we discuss an adoption of if we have a strategy for any incentives with potential applicants for what might happen on 700 or some of these other corridor locations? Not only do we have those funds that we can use as an incentive, but maybe implement something that speaks to a deed restriction that, of some kind that favors employees of the city could have the option for those units.
What about difference for the resident, of the dwellings that we already own?
The dwellings we own.
I know that they are of a particular caliber of home, but to make them available if a first choice, are we allowed to do those kinds of things? To restrict that, to give deference first to a city employee that might want to rent that?
Probably. I would, I would expect, we, we contract with a rental management company, and so if we instructed them that way, that's, that could happen.
Yeah, that's, that could be one of our points, potentially.
Yeah, let me, let me look at that really quick, what it says. It says, what, what it says is, implement a mortgage assistance program for employees of the municipality. An employer that provides contracted service to, services to the municipality or any other public employer that operates within the municipality. And then they also have a catch-all at the end, that you can basically come up with your own program. So. But, but I think the thing is, we would just need to come up with a timeline and a strategy to implement that. So I don't know how long their leases are on those homes. That's something we would have to look into.
Right, especially our first responders. It'd be great to have more of them.
Or public works that might have to, have to do the, be close by.
When you have a street blowing up, you know, in the middle of the night. So, right, okay.
Mayor, do we, do we envision the possibility of identifying certain areas of the city, primarily on the west side, that we could designate for modern income housing? Not low-income housing, but modern income housing? I know that's one of the strategies.
I think certainly, you know, what they're spelling out is if you want to have one of these transit-oriented development, you know, hub points, that's, that's where it seems to make the most sense. That's where they're trying to guide communities to focus around.
But, but in the absence of, of, you know, the likelihood of us getting a transit-oriented, you know, a BRT or a tracks or whatever it might be, is, that's quite, quite a ways in the future. We're talking, you know, what, 10, 12, 15 years, maybe? I, I just, I'd like to keep that on the table, if that's even a possibility. I know you and I have talked. I don't know if you endorse it or not, but again, some of the areas that we could possibly set aside that wouldn't be next to, you know, resident, no, established residential areas, but maybe areas that we could look at to incentivize, encourage modern income housing. Just a thought.
What are, what are your thoughts on that, Mike? Does this require that there's already a stated resolution that that's something? That that's something that's acceptable versus can we see what happens with some of the potential applications that may come for development of those areas?
These are a couple of strategies, the one in yellow and the one in brown there, those are kind of the two that the general plan committee looked like, looked at, that you specifically zone or rezone for, for higher density, or you rezone for densities necessary to facilitate the production of modern income housing. I, I don't, that second one, I don't know what, you know, that, we'd have to go work with developers and stuff and figure out what that density actually is. I don't know if it's, you know, for example, we did ten units to the acre on the Norton and Linden Nursery, and those are going to be four hundred thousand dollar townhomes. So I don't know what that density is, if it's twenty units, I, you know, we, we would have to work with developers and figure out what that density is.
The data points that they're working off of, when are they going to be updated?
What?
The, the assumptions that they base the median income off of.
That's just off the census.
Off the census, okay.
They, they do some surveys, they try to update it every couple of years.
So those assumptions we're going to have for the next little while, because they're fairly recent, refresh?
Yes. I know, I've spoken with, well, he's spoken with me, but I've spoken with him also. Wayne Corbridge is, I know, very, very interested in trying to do some quality, modern income housing projects, and I don't know, maybe we just informally reach out to him and see what his ideas are.
Yeah, I know, Mayor, you, you've talked about the trailer park, and, you know, you, you could proactively rezone that for a higher density.
Yeah.
There's a lot of.
But, but that comes also, like with trailer parks, you have to, there's a whole process, you've got to go with relocating those. There's, there's a, a nine-month just notice that you have to give residents and things, so.
Well, again, my hope is that we just would at least keep it, keep it in mind, those are possibilities, so.
If the council will indulge me a little bit of venting on what I find to be irony by the state legislature for asking us to do what is continually increasing obstacle, difficult obstacle course that I fear is getting more to a ninja warrior type situation of trying to meet all of the requirements. It's not your typical obstacle course, in my opinion, then you throw in the economy, and the way you, you, you can't keep the numbers straight. I, I happened to, my first job was at a real estate office in nineteen seventy-nine, and every week, this is, tells you about technology, the lending letter would come from the bank for the townhomes that we were selling, and I would watch it tick up. And I would watch the developer just sink, you know, as we're trying to sell these and trying to write all the contracts and watch them, well, we're in a very similar situation, thank goodness, we're not in the nineteen percent rates right now, right? Knock on wood. But I feel like the legislators, legislature is just tying our hands and making it more difficult for us to have the autonomy to take care of, and I, again, I'm venting, but hopefully maybe we can find some solidarity and find some solutions or some common ground in this. That it's, it's like trying to meet all those points that we want to get those fundings, are they actually, are, are they going to be attainable sometimes, I have to ask myself because of the economy? And then, then you take the irony of how we are restricted on how we can do anything about what short-term rentals might be doing in our community to prohibit us from making those potential benchmarks? And so I feel like, I, I don't know, I feel like I'm boxing a kangaroo, and my hands are tied behind my back sometimes, given what our requirements are, what the lobbyists are able to accomplish in, in their vein of what they do for a living. And then what we are trying to do is create a community that is very welcoming to so many, and then we look at these dynamics that we have to reach and these categories and boxes we have to check. And you feel like you could be on the council for forty-five years and never really make it so that the, that you would please the current legislature, let, let alone next year's legislature. So sometimes I feel like we're being kind of, I just appreciate the whole, the whole thing, that everything, what you're doing in your department, but sometimes I just have to wonder how we're going to be able to make, get all of our boxes off, so.
Make more bricks with less straw, we'll take your straw.
And the other thing is, they're taking these numbers, for me, that's a little bit concerning, they're taking numbers across the entire county.
Yes.
And that's rural areas mixed in with urban.
So if, if some of our legislatures are listening, yep, this is Randy Powell that said that, so.
To create that median price.
Come, come visit me, we will, we can have a talk.
We're not seeing wages go up with what's happening with prices, and yet we see increases sometimes in taxes, and so the underlying, yeah, there's things that, working against us on both ends, certainly.
Thank you for indulging me with that.
Mayor and council, so we, we've kind of got one strategy under our belt already with accessory apartments. How do you feel with the eliminating, eliminating the impact fee for detached accessory apartments?
Or could it just a reduction be sufficient versus a total elimination?
Yes, yeah, it's, well, no, it says eliminate impact fees for any accessory dwelling unit that is not internal accessory. So detached, we, we call it substantially detached and detached, so you would, you'd have to eliminate it.
And we only have a handful of those per year, so that wouldn't.
We've only approved three in the last five years, this may incentivize some others, but.
So we just have to do it, we don't have to have so many units that do that, just the act of doing that?
Take a point off, take a box.
But it wouldn't be financially harmful to the city, you suggest.
It's eighteen hundred dollars, eighteen, one thousand eight hundred and fourteen. And so.
That's one I'm very open to, I think that's, that's an easy one.
So that, that's two of them already. How, how do you feel about the RDA? You know, we, we don't have those funds yet, but that's something we will be setting aside, and that's something, like when we get a developer in, we can work with them on a participation agreement. You know, that, that's something we can, it's more of a long-term goal, but.
Well, you certainly, let's use your example of fifty units, and we give them a ten percent kicker for, for designating those units. I mean.
That would be a different strat, that was, that's the next one. This one's just using the set-aside funds.
Oh, gotcha.
For seven hundred north and the Linden Park, and so.
That'd be easy enough to do.
That, that'd be the set-aside funds for those two projects. And so we, we would help them, it's like it says, demonstrate utilization of a modern income housing set aside from a community, community reinvestment agency, redevelopment agency, to create subsidized, or to create or subsidize modern income housing. So, you know, we, we would help, you know, with some way, whether or not they, you know, try to create that, so whether it's helping with utility line, or whether it's helping with a public road, or, or something like that, we help reduce that cost so they can set aside some units for modern income housing.
What percentage would be, what would that number look like?
We'll have to negotiate that later on, so it may only be a couple of units. You know, is it, you know, they'll have to run their numbers, we'll have to run ours, and.
So you say negotiate, that, that would be with the developer?
With the developer.
So right now, we would just need to indicate that we're willing to do that?
That we'll set us, we'll use those set-aside funds to help offset a cost.
A future developer.
Yes. And I'll have to come up with an implementation strategy and on that.
How specific does our language have to be?
That we're just, I think that we're willing to, that we're, that we will set aside those funds.
We're going to set aside the funds now or in the future?
Well, we have to set them aside, so we're already required to do that. So we will use those, so we'll, we will use those funds and negotiate with a developer when they come in to, to help create modern income housing.
A portion of those funds or all of those funds?
We have, we, so ten, we have to use, well, it'll be up to us, but we have to use all the funds for housing. So we have to use ten percent of what seven hundred north creates, we have to use that for housing in that, or sorry, five percent in seven hundred north, we have to use ten. Yes, in that district, it has to stay in that district. In twenty sixteen, that was the law back then, is five percent has to stay in that area. And then they changed it, so our Linden Park, ten percent has to be used. So that's about ten thousand dollars, I think, Louis Young.
It's fairly nominal, as I recall.
And, and that ten percent could be used anywhere, so we could use it in seven hundred north. If Orem had a project, we could use it in Orem, you know, that could, that could be used anywhere. We could use it with the housing authority, and we have more flexibility with that ten thousand dollars, it's not much, but.
And had, for example, the, the project we had on seven hundred north, why can't I remember his name?
Miller.
Yeah, Mark Miller, we, we could have used it on that, that would have checked this box.
Yeah, now it's a long-term thing, like, because like, we currently aren't setting any aside, because we don't, we're not creating any, we're not creating any substantial funds down there, because there's not much commercial.
Right.
So we would, in our participation agreement, we would say, we're going to reimburse them so much every year for the next fifteen years, you know, of that, that five percent.
All right, that, how does that feel to the council? That one makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, if we have to do it, then it makes sense that it's what we use.
Just call it out as one of our strategies, right? And that ten thousand, we don't necessarily need to tie it to any particular district at this point, we can leave it open. All right, so that ticks off, are we looking at?
Those are three.
That's three.
Those are threes that we at least have. Now, what's the council's, what's your appetite? Yeah, what's your appetite on two additional?
So three is the minimum?
Yeah.
We could have met that.
You know, I, I have full confidence in your ability to be creative, and you've done, you've found some creative ways that are fairly low-impact. I don't want to compromise the city to satisfy the state. I, I think let's continue to be who we are, but if there's two more you can find that, that are pretty low-impact, I think, let's look at it, because I don't want to lose prioritization. At the same time, I don't want to make grand-sweeping changes because of this menu that the state has sent down to us, is where I'm at. But, but you're very creative, you, I mean, the ways you, the ones you've come up with are pretty low-impact, and I think you've done a great job.
If you feel three is substantial, the council feels three is substantial, we can keep in mind some of these as they're going to require us new steps next year as well.
I'll discuss with Adam and Brian about the three homes, see if we, there's anything we can do with, creative with that. Can I just ask what the council's appetite for that last one in yellow about giving kind of a density bonus? You know, if that was, and we would come up with that percentage, if it's five, if it's ten, you know, I, I don't know what percent that may be, but I did, I did fail to add one more bullet point that, and it's one of the strategies that just says to implement zoning incentives for modern income housing units in new developments. So that would be, you know, that would play into that, you know, five percent or ten percent increase in density.
Well, without getting any, without getting any detailed discussion, I think, you know, my feelings on that, I would, I'm comfortable with it. To the, to the untrained eye, for the.
Maybe you only say it's for a specific area, maybe it's only in seven hundred north.
I mean, no one would ever know that they were.
If you're doing fifty units, no one's going to see five more units, or something like that.
Ten percent, the bonus?
No.
We could set that?
We would set that.
I think for the right area, I, I might, I, I think it's hard to, would, would we then, the affordable units, would we then, are we then picking and choosing who receives those? Or just they are low-income units?
So, yeah, so what we say is you've got to deed-restrict five units, and so we let the developer say which units those are, and it's better if they, if they're not assigned, it's not always unit one oh one, you know? Next time, maybe it's unit one oh five, you know, that, that way, it just fits in, you know, how it's supposed to. Nobody knows, hey, this is a low-income person.
Well, clarification, this is median income, not low-income. That low-income is, moderate, right? Low is a whole nother category, so we're.
That's the way I see it.
To your question, no, we wouldn't have to say who gets it, that would be up to the developer.
I'm mixing strategies there, right?
They would be contractually obligated to do, to do that, to get the incentive or whatever.
We did something really similar to this, not necessarily the density bonus, but Fieldstone Homes, when they came in back in like two thousand and six, we said, hey, twenty percent of these have to be sold within a certain price range. And I don't know, I think if you were here, and we just said Fieldstone, we entered into an agreement with them, and they made it happen, and then they had to submit documentation with the building permit for each of those units that applied. And so it's kind of a long time and done, it's not a deed restriction, but it worked. It seemed like there was a lot of.
That was not a deed restriction, these will be, or?
So these would be perpetually.
Yeah, that's one of the concerns is, when that homeowner then goes to sell, if they can, they had a full-market value, and then you kind of lose that opportunity for.
Yeah, I have seen, well, I haven't seen, I've heard of programs where they'll have a, still a deed restriction, but the next owner can only, you know, increase their.
Maybe twenty percent or something, yeah.
Something like that.
They can have some equity built and advantage, but it's capped.
Yeah.
On the Fieldstone one, did, was there a density bonus tied to that, or it was an attempt?
I mean, in a way, because the, the city allowed a higher density to go in there, and that was one of the trade-offs of that, so.
I almost think like on the Mark Miller project, we could have just said, hey, Mike, not Mark, Mike, we are going to require that five of the units be sold at moderate levels if we're going to move on forward with this project, we're not giving you a bonus, we're not doing anything. Would that meet a criteria, would that then be a strategy that we're use, we're requiring?
Yeah, that would meet that, implement a zoning incentive for modern income housing in new developments, so that, that can be a zoning incentive.
It's an interesting strategy, I haven't thought about that much, I'd be. On, on both of these, I think, I'm a maybe, that's an interesting thought. I mean, it still gives us the power to pick and choose who's coming in, doesn't mean we're going to have condos up and down, it's just a, a tool in the tool belt, doesn't hold our, you know, doesn't handcuff us to anything, right?
Yeah, a developer may look at it, say, no, I don't want, I don't want your density bonus, it doesn't benefit me enough, or, you know, but we, we hope it would if we're putting it in place, but they're, they wouldn't be contractually.
Well, I think that's the key, if it's in place and we've got a plan to utilize it, then that should meet the requirement.
All we're doing is incentivizing if they want to take advantage of it.
Yeah.
Does it have to call out right now a specific percentage or unit number right now, can we leave that open-ended?
I think we would need to, because it says, you know, incentivize.
All right, council, so what, what are you comfortable with?
I don't know, still chewing.
We got till October to get that number, or we got to come up with it today?
No, we can work with the planning commission on it, because I'm, I'm going to go back to the planning commission of August ninth. We can work on that number and then bring you a number in September.
I'd like to have a fuller council.
Mike's is on my mind right now, you know, he was, he had, what, two hundred and thirty-four is the number in my mind of condo units, so if we had a ten percent bonus, that'd have been another twenty-three units, that's, that's a lot of units. I don't know. Where maybe, you know, five percent would have been another twelve units, he would have hit them well. He probably, like Mike says, he never would have even known they were there.
Yep.
I don't know, I need to look into that one. I've got a friend up in Lehigh on their planning commission who does, they do a lot of the density bonus thing up there. I can, I'll chat with him, I'll chat with a few people.
Brian knows Ryan Wood really well, he could, they're city attorney, he could talk to him.
All right, and is there anything in the language there if we were to do a survey of some kind to try to gather the data of what moderate or even affordable housing is being provided by these larger homes that have basement dwellers? Mike, would that ever be something that they would count as a strategy that we're trying to do a collective survey to gather our inventory numbers that fall in this category?
I don't think, I don't think that would, it would just fall under allowing accessory apartments, but I don't think it would be a bad idea to, you know, reach out and find out how, you know, try to help find out how many we have. Because we want to determine a baseline.
Right.
And then figure out how many we have, so that's not a bad idea. I, I just, I don't think that counts as another strategy, but it could be part of our bench, part of our implementation part.
All right, very good, do you have anything else for us then on this discussion item?
I don't, thank you very much for your feedback.
Also, to that point, is it possible to anonymously acquire, ask people what would prevent them from, what has prevented them? So that we can help, I don't know, in, in our outreach, somehow, maybe acquire a list of reasons why people.
You mean not doing AD, or doing ADUs?
Or not doing a legal one, not getting a permit.
I, I know, for us, we're, we're looking at something, but cost right now is the.
Some are already.
Yeah, already.
Find out why they're.
If they come in and say, okay, I'm going to come clean, I did this, and.
How, how can we help you?
How can we help you?
Some, some people are just not the government, and, you know, and so, but what, what are some of the hurdles? I guess is what I'd like to know.
Some of those obstacles, okay, very good. Some of those obstacles, okay, very good. All right, so we'll move on to item number ten, public, this is a public hearing to amend our planned residential development overlay zone.
I'll make a motion for that public hearing.
Thank you very much. Okay, motion by council member Vanchery, seconded by council member Powell, all in favor to open a public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. We are now in a public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, will first be presented.
All right, thank you. So, we've been working with the planning commission, we've, I think since March, we've had four or five meetings on updating this planned residential development overlay zone. So, and we also spoke with the council about this before updating it. And so, couple of things I wanted to run through real quick. What, what this change does is it requires that you have a, you adopt, so in order to develop in this area or under this ordinance, you'd first have to amend the ordinance to add your area to the zoning ordinance. And so you can see, this now includes the Linden Nursery, the Norton property and the five townhomes on four hundred west. And so if a developer comes in, they've got to amend the ordinance to allow their map, their area, and they've also got to rezone the property, just like we've been, we've, the process we've been through.
So, so that would make it, so no one naturally qualifies, they have to apply for that. But the, the criteria to apply for that still applies, that it has to be three hundred feet off? That, all of that criteria, noth, and nothing's changing there tonight?
That's correct.
On that criteria.
Yep. So yeah, they, they'll have to, they, they already have to go through the rezone process, this is just another step in that. Go back here real quick. Density, so we spent a lot of time talking with the planning commission on this. So, the density is proposed to remain at ten units per acre, that's been in place since two thousand and fifteen when those five townhomes were approved on, on four hundred west. What it does though is if you're connecting to a neighborhood like we did on the Norton property, then when you get within two hundred feet of that connection to that existing single family neighborhood, your density drops down to six units per acre and you have to do detached single family. Now, the minimum lot size that we've already adopted under this zone is five thousand square feet. And then you've got to provide this transect map that, that shows how your density is, is transitioning. So, you'll, you know, where your ten units is and then where you're ending up at six units.
Let me, let me make sure I understand. Hypothetical, if, if the zone allows for up to ten and for whatever, actually we say ten is okay. Where we have this six, two hundred feet from existing residential and their single family, is it possible to have more, you know, if we average ten, so could a portion of it be twelve? To, to get to the average of ten?
So that, yeah, that's what we go off as the gross acreage. And so you may have some townhomes that are right behind the commercial, maybe they're, you know, at twelve and you're at six on the single family.
On the single family, okay.
Slightly higher, but your overall density is, is ten.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see, go through that real quick. Highest density has to be next door to the commercial. If you're doing with that, with your setbacks, what we found with, under the current ordinance, we, we adopted a thirty foot front yard setback, but then they included the sidewalks in an easement, so you really ended up with a twenty-six foot setback. So what we're saying now is this, you've got to put in your four foot sidewalk and then your twenty-five foot setback. So, with parking, we, we are now requ, so under the current ordinance, we said you could have sixty-five percent as two car garages, thirty-five percent as one car, we're just saying now they all need to be two car garages. Where before we said you could count fifty percent of the driveways for visitor parking, we got rid of that. We're saying now you just have to have all of the visitor parking off street. And so, for example, on the Norton property, that increases the number of parking stalls, I think by nine and the Linden Nursery by seven. And then it requires that all the, all of the streets be public. We've, both, both of those developments, the one on four hundred west, those are all off a public street. Everybody's putting their utilities in the public street, so it just made sense to continue with that. If you're, it requires sidewalks on both sides of the street, if you're doing, if you're having access to an existing neighborhood, you have to work with the city, city engineer on traffic calming. And then one thing the commission really wanted to see was, they felt with the Linden Nursery that they, they didn't have the authority to, to the extent feasible, require site improvements. And so they would have liked to have worked with the Platts on additional landscaping or parking and things like that, so that, we added that. So where it's part of an existing commercial development, you know, the, the planning commission can work with that developer on, on improving the site. So, with that, I'd like to answer any questions.
All right, I have one question. One of the things that was discussed at length with these last two was not having this all become rental product. And how could, what could be a mechanism for that? And, and I know with the one, it was when they are required to submit their CCNRs, they'll have an HOA language that speaks to, you know, capping the percentage, so that we have more owner occupancy and opportunity for people to own homeownership. And that could meet, you know, potential median. Is, I did not see that in this reiteration of calling out in any way.
I think you need to, Brian, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you probably need to just follow the process you did last time was condition, make a condition of approval on the zone change, that they work with staff on adding a, adding a percentage to the CCNRs.
Is there any particular reason we wouldn't have that spelled out here so that's, you know, as people change over in these positions, that's something that is, is one of the boxes that gets discussed for sure and doesn't get missed.
And it's transparent, to your point, it's transparent for the developer.
I think the problem, I, I. I mean, the, the one, the one issue I've seen, and I've, I've had it, had legal councils tell me before that by right, people have a, you know, people have a right to rent their home if they want to. And it's better if you just work with the HOA and, and determining what that percentage is, I, I don't know.
I, I, I need to look into that a little more closely. I know that the HOAs can do that, but, but it does go along with those same questions about, you know, deed restrictions and things like that, so. Now, let me look into that a little bit more specifically.
All right.
That, that was our concern.
Right, I think we've learned that it's, it's something the HOA would be responsible for in regulating. And it's done in other communities quite a lot. So just wondering if that's.
I know it's done a lot, I haven't seen it in ordinances, so I would.
On the city side?
Yeah, I, I'd have to research that more.
Okay. All right, thank you, council, any other questions, just, this is.
Thoughts and concerns, I've expressed this a little bit with Mike and a couple others, but.
May I invite you to speak in the microphone?
I got really relaxed with the storm coming in, apparently. Yeah, I've mentioned this, that I'm so grateful for some of these changes, the parking, and there's just been so many boxes that I went, yes. We're just buttoning this up and so appreciative of all the work that's gone in. I'm going to bring up a tender topic, but I'm going to ask that we revisit, rethink the, the density of per acres because, and I'm going to give my, my, one of my, my reasons for this is that our commercial district cuts right through our, our one twenty. The heart of our large lots on both the east and the west side. It's not the one twelves up on the north and it's not whatever our density can be on the west side. So for me, it's a very tender subject, that's why we ended up with so many people here. And any place that our PRD is going to be associated with something next to our, our one twenty, I think is very vulnerable to having be problematic for our city. I'm going to express that I would like to see us reduce that number ten. I would like it to be in the seven, seven and a half units per acre. It'd be my max would be seven and a half, but that's something I'd be much more comfortable with because we've looked at the problematics of, depends on the size of the property, the, the, the shape of it, the needs of perhaps needs for a retention pond. There's so many things that need to happen that if we don't put in a number that's lower than that ten, that we back in fifteen put, because we were only dealing with that one little strip of land on four hundred west. Those, those of us who were there at the time next to Mazer didn't foresee the problems that we might have. Now, that doesn't mean that density is, can't happen, but I do think in these particular areas with the PRDs, with the PRD next to the R one twenties, I think be able to keep that number lower gives us more manageability with traffic. I don't know, I'm just much more comfortable with a number like that, so I throw that out as a potential conversation topic, so. And I know that kind of goes contrary to the discussion we had on the item before this, but I gave my reason to the fact because it is right through the center of our town and the connections.
Help us understand, Randy, so when you, when you gave that number, seven, seven and a half, you're saying aggregate total?
Per acre, on, on average.
Already it has to transition to six as it starts to abut the R one, R one twenty.
Correct, well, and that's, that's just an arbitrary number here, just like kind of ten was. But it, it would need to, to then still have some sort of a, a buffer and we may have to put that down to five. I'm not quite sure where a conversation would take us on that, but it's, to me, it needs to be a discussion that we have to maybe submit, maybe not for now, but for future council, future thoughts of what, what those kind of projects will look like, you know, going forward. We have a few here and there that it could come forward, we don't see anything on the horizon immediately, but I know that we've all, well, not all of us, but many of us have expressed, hmm, I'd like to revisit this topic. And so for me, this is a portion of this topic that I'm grateful that is before us, that I'm not comfortable keeping a ten. Absolutely not comfortable keeping a ten on this. So, whatever that number is, below that is, is the discussion I would like to ask us to have.
All right, council member Powell has opened the discussion for that. Okay, so you're okay with all the other points thus far?
There's so many things that are so wonderful in this and this would be my major.
This is a sticking point for you. Okay, this evening, okay, very good, understood, all right.
Well, obviously, I, I disagree, which is okay. I, I think, you know, we spent over a year compromising, if that's the right word, to get, to get where we arrived at. I think we ended up with eight point three or something on the Norton property.
Eight point four.
Eight point four, which, and, and I feel like that, you know, this, the way the ordinance is written, it, it's, it's still a compromise. If we're only saying six units for those areas abutting single family residences, I, I don't, to, to me, that would assuage any concerns that I would have. Because obviously, we're not going to let those areas next to commercial development go crazy, we're not going to say fifteen per acre, we're not going to, I mean, that's a given. So I, I feel like the way that it's written, I'm, I'm comfortable with it because I think it does represent a compromise. I, I still don't know what we're trying to accomplish by traffic, I mean, you know, again, I go back to my original point, if it were commercial, it would be far more traffic than it would be if it were residential. And so, I think we've done a good job, rightfully so, of looking at the traffic issues, doing the traffic studies, designing, redesigning, coming up with, I think is probably one of the best products to handle the, the traffic. And I think, given the size of these developments that we're talking about, I don't, I don't really see how another six to eight, even ten units are going to appreciably increase the, the traffic congestion and so forth. I, that's just, that's just my feeling. And so, I feel like the way it's written, it is a good compromise that came from the planning commission, that was a recommendation that they made. And so, and I appreciate your perspective, I, it's no secret how you feel.
All right.
But, but that's okay.
That's the thing, Mike, that you and I can have different opinions.
Oh, absolutely.
And, and still highly respect each other and I appreciate you.
Absolutely.
I appreciate you, Mike.
No, thanks for.
Mr. Florence, since we have so many mics in the room, could you please clarify for us? So, if I'm going to understand this correctly, the way it's presented right now, ten units per acre would be that, how, would the project was looked at, looked at overall, the total acreage overall? So for example, if they only did the six in the back portion, they could have more than ten technically per acre abutting the commercial because they get to count that acreage in the back.
That was my question, yeah, that was my question and.
So if we had a true staging of it, is there a way to delineate that they couldn't stack more than ten behind the commercial? Because right now, they, they can look at the whole acreage and probably get more like a, a product of twelve or more.
Yeah, I mean, you could say like, you, you've got this transect map here, this, this is very, you know, this goes rural to, you know, urban. But, I mean, you could say no more than, you know, you, no area in the transect ma, transect map can have more than ten units to the acre. So that, that way you're not getting fourteen on one and six on the other or something like that.
And Mary, I'm even okay with that. I, you know, if we, if we keep it to six next to the residential areas and we don't increase it more than ten in those areas.
And they would be delineated in that, on the transect map, so they can't get a, a bonus basically up at the commercial front.
I mean, I'm realistic enough to, to recognize that if they came in and said, we want fourteen, fifteen to compensate for the six, that that's just not going to happen. I, I believe, I believe that would be the case.
That's how they approached, that, I know the Norton property, that's how it was approached.
Yeah.
Overall, was the total acreage.
Yeah, yeah.
Trying to meet that, even though they were kind of pushing more units on the commercial side.
Now, with the Norton property, they don't have to do that transect map, right? Because they're, they're not connecting to an existing residential neighborhood, so they're just saying overall, we would just say ten units to the acre.
I'm, I'm sorry, you mean the.
Sorry, the Linden Nursery.
Linden Nursery, yeah, okay.
Sorry about that.
Thoughts on that clarification and?
Yeah, I, we can bring this back next time and, and update that.
All right, council, how do you feel about continuing this and, and how do you feel about that concept of, let's have a little bit of a discussion so we can give staff a little more direction, please? Regarding Randy's comments, Mike's comments, maybe the, being more specific in the transect map, any thoughts on?
And if I can just go over densities real quick, the, so the Norton property was at eight point four units per acre.
Overall?
Overall. If you drop that to seven units per acre, that, that goes from sixty-five units to fifty-five units. And so, that, that's kind of that, what that, going from eight point four to seven is a difference of ten, ten units.
Yeah, and that's one of my concerns too, is it's always been, I, I know there's an argument that we're not in the business to help developers make money, but, but the fact remains is, that's why developers do what they do, is to make money, otherwise they'd, you know, do it as a community service. And that would be my concern too, is we ratchet it down so tight that it doesn't pencil out, it's not feasible to, to, to do the project.
Would you not agree though that sometimes the negotiations, the valuation of the property is subject to the number of doors that can be created on the property too?
Yes, I do.
That's part of.
But, but I, I mean, I have to wonder if, if on the Norton property, if we, if we ratchet it down by ten units, my, my belief is that it, it probably wouldn't pencil out.
Based on the price they paid, but that would have been part of
Yeah.
what they would have negotiated with the sellers. I, I mean, I, I guess I think we've all, those two issues were so, such a long process. I think we all know that one developer even stated, his stated purpose for getting more units was to pay a, a little bit better price on the land.
Yeah.
To one of those parties, so.
What did we end up, Linden Nursery, price per unit? Or not price per unit, sorry, units per acre?
Um, I want to say they were nine point two.
That was really close.
Yeah, that sounds about right. Yeah.
Well, let me give my opinion, I have been sidelined on this one and I feel so bad that I couldn't get yelled at with. that I couldn't get yelled at with you guys. Uh, so sad to sit in that corner and snicker. Um, very intimately involved, especially in the Norton one on the financing side. Um, very familiar with the product. Um, love what's been done here and, and I'm, I, I think I'm on board with all of those changes, uh, with the exception of the one that Randy brought up. As I campaigned and have many friends through that area, it's, on paper, it's hard to tell until it's built. When you drive down those streets, whether, you know, you get the feel on, on paper and, and from those that are living there close by, it still feels really dense at that 8.4. And so I can't imagine how dense it would feel at the 10, which, which leaves me inclined to, to lean on Randy's side on that and, and that I wouldn't, um, that I would like to see a decline in that 10 number. Um, and so, you know, if we're looking to give direction, if we're looking for, um, direction here as I come off the sidelines and onto the court for the first time on these, I, I, I've always felt, but not been able to express that due to the, the potential conflicts of interest, that, um, that it was a bit dense for my liking, which will come to a surprise to no one. Um, and so I, you know, as Randy throws out arbitrary numbers, 10 being arbitrary beginning and, and now these numbers, um, you know, I, I find myself inclined to, to, to back Randy on those. Um, has, I've had several conversations with councilmember Broderick as well. Um, I, I don't want to speak for him, but especially we're, we're maybe going to table this so, um, for another meeting, so I won't speak for him. Um, but that's where I'm at.
All right. Daryl.
I'm not a fighter, I'm a lever. So I'm somewhere in the middle. I hadn't, I need to let it all absorb for me. I'm new to this and I remember four years ago when I was on the council, there was concern about it and I grew up on a rural farm. The nearest home was a mile away. So density was pretty awesome then, but my kids have moved away from this community because they can't afford it. So I'm still trying to determine where I need to be representing the city and the thoughts of most of the citizens here. So.
All right.
That's fair.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you everyone for those comments and, and sharing and being transparent. So it sounds like, uh, if we can entertain a motion to, to continue this and then if you have additional questions as we sort of vet this for the next, so we can, uh, yes, we'll, uh, just call, just communicate with staff on, on this if you have further questions on it, but it is a public hearing. So if we have any of our public here that would like to have a comment or a question.
Here, up there.
Come on forward.
Lincoln was itching to get in on this.
That's right.
My real name is Lincoln Jacobs. Um, I'd have to say from my perspective, I tend to side more with Randy. Um, my kids have moved away as well. Um, but I don't think it's just because Linden is too expensive. It's life right now. It's everywhere. Um, but I do go out to have, um, some kids in Saratoga Springs and some in Eagle Mountain. The ones that are in Eagle Mountain, it's much, much more dense and it's, nobody plans to stay there. They're going to come, they're going to stay for a minute and every single one of them plans to leave. Parking is incredibly difficult. Um, one of the first council meetings I attended, Van brought up the Anderson Farms parking there and I drove out and it's, it's very similar out, like out where my daughter lives, Eagle Mountain. Um, I don't see a real good reason to push that high density. I, I, I like it a little bit more. I like the comments that were made, six next to existing, not to exceed 10. I think that's a good idea. I don't know if I represent other Lindenites, but, um.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good.
More pickleball court, right?
Any other public comment?
Hmm.
All right. Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Motioned by councilmember Magalby.
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Hoyt. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. If it's okay, mayor, I'll make a motion.
Yes, please.
Thank you. I make a motion to continue ordinance 20, 22 dash 5 dash O, amending, attempting to amend the title 17.76, the planned residential development overlay zone.
Okay. So motioned by councilmember Powell. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Uh.
Jake got it.
Okay. Daryl's got it. We'll put it in the notes, put in the record. Okay. Seconded by councilmember Magalby. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That is unanimous. All right. Thank you all and thank you again. Um, Mike, tremendous work. I mean, this is.
Yeah, a lot of work.
And Mary as well.
The planning commission spent a lot of time on it too. So it was good.
Looks like we need to enter the RDA and if it's all right.
That's right.
I'll move to recess the Linden City Council meeting and convene as the Linden City RDA.
All right. Thank you, council.
I'll second that.
Okay. Seconded by councilmember Van Cherry. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are now reconvened. Um, we'll have our call to order and which is with an aye. And let's start with you, Randy.
Randy Powell, aye.
Jake Hoyt, aye.
Carolyn Lundberg, aye.
Mike Van Cherry, aye.
Daryl McAlbee, aye.
Okay. Very good. Well, we have the minutes before you in the packet. Any discussion? Any?
I didn't find anything. I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from, the RDA minutes from June 20th, 2022.
All right. Thank you, councilmember Powell.
Second.
Okay. Seconded by councilmember Hoyt. All in favor to approve the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. He is unanimous. Okay. We are ready to review and take action on the resolution. And it looks like we're ready to have this presented again. Thank you.
Thanks, board members. This is our last step in working with, uh, Doug Smith Kia and the, and the Linden redevelopment agent area over there, the Linden Park. Um, so what you would be approving is a resolution for the participation agreement. We've worked with Doug Smith representatives and they are in favor of the participation agreement and, and are willing to sign that. Uh, I listed there for you what their commitment is. They have to have a store open by December 31st, 2024, uh, and then as the, the four bullet points that the city agrees to. The total incentive package would be the 929,000. On the sales tax incentive, um, we will collect the first 125,000. That will remain with the city. They will get anything above that. Um, so their maximum sales tax and property tax incentive would be 679,000. They have five years to meet the sales tax incentive or the 679,000, whatever comes first. Um, and then the property tax is also part of that 679,000. And then the 250,000 is from the existing RDA number three over there that, um, we would, they would use for relocating that, the regional storm drain line that's in that area. So with that, we would be glad to answer any questions.
All right. We've had excellent presentations by Burningham, Lewis and Young. So.
And Rob is now with Sandy City. So that's why he is not here tonight.
Wow.
He's with them and he was hired by them.
Yeah. He's, he's their new deputy RDA director. So.
Wow. Good catch for them. All right.
Tickled pink about this. Great work. Uh, this is going to be a home run for Linden City. I'll, I'll move to approve resolution 2022 dash nine dash RDA approving the Linden's, Linden Park CRA participation agreement with Doug Smith Autoplex, Inc. as presented.
I'll second that.
All right. Thank you. Motioned by councilmember Hoyt, seconded by councilmember Magalby. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It is approved.
Thank you. This has been a great process to go through. It's going to be a tremendous benefit to the city and we're excited to work with them. So.
How soon do they plan on breaking ground, do you know?
So they are currently working with Kia. Um, they, uh, they've received their approval from Kia to relocate to Linden and they now have their architect working with, uh, with Kia on renderings and they have a certain rendering they have to meet, uh, or building design. And so they're working closely with that. So.
All right. And I have to, we need to commend you, Mike, as well. This is really something that you really drove to our city for us. So thank you very much.
Glad they're coming.
Mayor, I'll move to adjourn the, the Linden RDA meeting and reconvene as the Linden City Council.
All right. Motioned by councilmember Hoyt, seconded by councilmember Powell. All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We are adjourned. All right. We need to now go back into our public meeting after our recess to the redevelopment agency.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, or not to adjourn.
Reconvene.
To reconvene back into the regular city council.
Thank you, councilmember.
Did I already do that?
I thought that was.
I think I just did that.
Hey.
Oh, was that part of it?
It's one in the same.
One in the same. Thank you. All right.
Really make sure we do our journey. Cross our eyes and dot our t's everywhere.
Not board members anymore. We're having a council.
That's right. We're just regular council. Okay. Well, we'd like to welcome our chief here, Chief Brower. Thank you so much. This is item number 12. This is a discussion on the golf cart use on public streets.
All right. Well, thanks for having me here and inviting me to present this. Before I start though, I want to thank Adam and he sent out an email last week about Sergeant Welker that was highlighted on the Behind the Badge program and Mary, some of you have reached out and that went a long ways. Sergeant Welker's pretty humble. He was instructed to go through with that process and it was, uh, was good. So thanks for all the support. It means a lot to the guys. Um, I was asked to do a presentation on the potential ordinance of a golf cart use on city streets. So part of the research I went through, uh, looking at this is other entities, what they, if they have ordinances, uh, what the public safety issues may be and some additional resources. This all came about in the House Bill 184. Elk Ridge City kind of pushed forward. They have a golf course up there and they wanted, uh, residents to be able to transport over to the golf course with golf carts and use in city streets to get around. That was pushed into law in 2020. Uh, part of that, part of Utah Code 41 6A 1510, uh, gives municipalities the authority to create an ordinance for the use. Uh, there are some, there are some specifications that have to be met. Those are if they were allowed, where they could be driven, who may operate them, uh, hours when they could be driven. And obviously during daylight hours, a lot of, a lot of impact there. Uh, and the age, kind of the who may drive them. We look at that as well. Some of the exemptions that were passed in that, in that bill were they didn't have to be titled. Uh, they don't need an odometer or registration. They also had no need for insurance, which brings up some, some issues for, for public safety as well. Uh, and no vehicle tax beyond theirs. The legislation said they, they are to be treated as bicycles to be operated on, on roads if an ordinance was passed, uh, which kind of puts it down to the 41 6A 1105 on that second page, which kind of designates where bicycles can ride. And one of the impacts, I think for public safety purposes is under section five there. They don't have to stop in an intersection as long as they're, as long as the intersection is clear. There's no other traffic within the intersection and that oncoming traffic doesn't impose immediate threat. Uh, most crashes occur at intersections. Uh, most of our crashes here in London occur at intersections. Uh, part of, part of this bike code preventing them to go there is, it brings up some public safety concerns for me at intersections. Our people are distracted. I mean, that's, that's why most of these crashes occur in the first place. People aren't paying attention. They just bring, this brings another element of some potential public safety issues for us there.
Chief, how are we defining intersection? I'm thinking of the, the crossing on, uh, Fourth North where the, the trail, the canal trail comes across.
Mm-hmm.
Would that be considered an intersection or no? Because I know we've got posted signs that say bikers have to stop and.
Right.
I've seen them just buzz through that.
Yeah.
So is that considered an intersection?
Depends on how you term an intersection. To me, an intersection is, you know, a street where, where it connects, streets connect and goes through. But you're right. I mean, the Murdoch Trail coming across.
Yeah. That'd be my concern if they, if they get the idea that they can, you know, because it may, it may look clear.
Yeah. We currently have code that you cannot drive motorized vehicles in our, in our pathways and parks and.
Correct.
Trails.
What I'm talking about bicycles though specifically, because you, you mentioned that that intersection, you don't have to stop if it's clear, apply it to bikes.
No. And that, that's a big public safety concern to us is, is that they're cruising on their bikes and not paying attention and they go out and, yeah, they're listening to the distractions.
Okay.
Which comes into everything there. Uh, I wanted to highlight on a little bit of research and I'll go through that briefly. I think you've all kind of read that. There wasn't a lot of research to substantiate pros and cons. The only ones I could come up with were pretty good. Uh, one was an eight-year, one was a 10-year study. The eight-year study was out of Florida where a golf cart community basically where they're allowed to drive their golf carts in the street and there's a high number of them. Uh, of, of the reported crashes during that study, 48% of those required, uh, resulted in hospitalization, trauma or death to individuals in golf carts. And that just brings up.
Forests on forests.
Where we have some safety issues. Uh, injection in, in golf carts, 27% of those crashes, people were thrown from those. Uh, patients ranging in age from five months old to 96 years old. Falls, I want to, falls from golf cart and golf cart overturns were leading cause in both studies of injuries. And a, a lot of that is, uh, golf carts were designed and made for golf courses. Uh, now that they've kind of transitioned into some areas, they will, their speeds as low as 11 miles per hour way they're designed, they can tip over pretty easily at 11 miles per hour. Even 11 miles per hour tipping over, a child falling out, it's going to cause some injuries there. The rear brakes, uh, also cause some, some directional instability in these vehicles. Wheels turn, rear brakes cause some tip if they're at an angle going downhill, things like that. So these are those that I'm considering when I talk about public safety. So let's talk briefly about other, other municipalities and ordinances from other cities. Uh, recent conversations have occurred between chiefs of police within the Utah County, and I know I talked to Brian briefly. This conversation has also been brought up among city attorneys in their meetings. And pretty unanimously, most are opposed to these ordinance for the public safety purposes. A big majority of those are referred to Utah Code 41 6A 159, 1509 for street legal purposes. Uh, safety issues. Do they have headlights? Do they have taillights? Do they have turn signals, horns, rear mirrors, things that are capable of protecting people, windshields, doors, things like that that would reduce some of those. The city of Linden doesn't currently allow, uh, golf carts on city parks, trails due to the width on some of the trails and recent issues with tearing up of lawns on parks. Uh, about a year and a half, maybe almost two years ago, we had an incident Friar Park, golf cart overturned injuring some small children. So those are some of the safety concerns I have as, as far as public safety goes. Now, obviously there's, there's got to be some allowances for, for people who have disabilities to access parks. There've got to be a way for them to get there. So, you know, we look at those as well. Uh, and searching for some of the other cities and municipalities that have, there's, uh, Elk Ridge is basically the only one in Utah County that, that currently has one. Uh, the rest have opted not to. Centerville and Hurricane where other cities I, I located some. And it's kind of, it goes across the board. So, so Hurricane, you have to be 18 years old to operate one. Uh, Centerville, if their ordinance requires that they have to have a vehicle identification, serial number, mirror, some safety, some safety procedures to have in there. So from a public safety aspect, I, I look at mechanism of injury. What's to prevent or keep people safe in operation of these vehicles? And there's a lack of them for golf carts. Liability, I, another thing I, I probably would need to be looked at if, if, if the ordinance potential is there. If a 16-year-old son is driving that and ends up causing a crash and injures occupants, who's responsible? Does that come back on homeowners? Does that come back on owner of the golf cart? Is that, I mean, so there's a lot of things. If they're not required to have insurance, how are you going to deal with that? Uh, so bottom line from, from me, and I'll let you open up. I, I left some resources attached to that presentation, but, uh, it's appealing. It's, it's convenient, especially with gas, everything else, getting around town. Uh, but the over, overriding element to me is public safety and do those, those appealing aspects of it outweigh the safety and liability issues. And for those reasons that I would be, I'd be not in favor of an ordinance due to the public safety aspect of it. Any questions for me?
Well, some of us have more experience with golf carts than others, so we'll.
That's right. That's right.
And I don't want to jeopardize, so I'm just letting this flow, so I'd like to hear opinions.
I appreciate your efforts in finding this detail. The challenge is if you approve it, then you have multiple individuals that would take advantage of it. I, I just see it being really quite tragic for our community personally. You're going to see five, six-year-olds or, because people are going to get more and more golf carts and there's going to be more and more of them on the streets and trails, and we're just going to see a potential nightmare down the road, but it does sound appealing, I would probably want to buy my own one myself to get around my community. It's my feeling.
I, I think this is great research and well-done, and I 100%, but, you know, I agree with you, we support you and, and let's, let's move forward in that direction. I think when we do have occurrences where there are individuals breaking, not following this, let's not be heavy-handed, let's educate and, you know, kindly explain to them the rules and.
I think we should give Randy a 30 punch pass, that's so when she gets caught, she can just have her punch pass punched and.
You're fun on that. So, it's so fun to hear the, the discussions, because as we've gone through since the last time I, I found out about this, people have actually brought it to my attention as well. You can legally do this if your city will do that. Well, I've had a golf cart for a lot of years because of my disability. So, a lot of research has gone into this on my part, and I so appreciate making sure that our city is safe. For me, it has to be nice to have some, whether it's the e-cars or that were really popular there for a while, to save on our gas, right? I mean, everybody needs, needs some sort of a break on that, and it's good for the environment and a lot of reasons. But there's also, uh, there are several members of our community, not just me, who possess a handicap placard, who, um, have problems with mobility. There is a young lady I've met on the, on the trail who has the most incredible machine I've ever seen, I don't know what it is. It's, I don't know if anybody has seen it, anybody of our staff members? It's, it's like, it's not a pedal one, but it's, I don't know, it's blue. Have you seen it? Can't remember what it's called, I bumped it. There are some handle ones, but hers is, hers is mechanical, hers has lithium batteries in it, a lithium battery. And, um, but it qualifies as a, what the American Disability Act qualify, uh, says are the, um, other power-driven mobility devices are, are covered under the American Disability Act. So, as we approach the fact that, I guess I bring this up, as we look at the fact that legally the state is saying we can if we choose to do this, right? Okay, so, but I've also been cognizant of the fact that I've been in the Taco Bell with a cart full of teenagers in a golf cart just moving around town and, and at dusk, no safety, any things. I don't know if anybody had a license, but I know they're out there, and I know there's, you know, if we, if, if we say you can, but in the City of Linden you can't, but we also need to maybe come up with protocols, procedures, something that be, that is in line with the, um, American Disability Act that says golf carts are a mobility device. Specifically let, let, it specifically talks to the fact of that, um, that they are, and so somehow we have to implement how we use them and policies in which we do them, and, and Brian is ready to just say something, I can just see him over there, so.
Well, I'm thinking of a hybrid kind of, I, I sympathize with your plight, and it does make sense that you would have the ability. It's hard to generalize, but almost without exception, when I see golf carts, whether it's in our city or other cities, it's young kids, way too many kids on it, uh, you know, hanging on the back, hanging off the side.
How does, how do we as a city decide who is allowed to be on them and who is not?
Well, that, this is what I was going to suggest, uh, just as a possibility. Is there any way that we could craft something that would, uh, give special, uh, consideration to someone like Randy or those with mobility impairments?
They're actually already here, it's just how does the city do that, is that what Brian wants to say?
Yeah, but.
Can I piggyback on that? I, thanks for sending that over Randy, I looked at that and, uh, Brian can answer this, but I think in that, uh, there, there could be an adjustment to the current ordinance to allow for that ADA exception on parks and trails. But that to me, that to me, that section that you sent over to me in that link for the ADA, it mostly includes public governmental facilities, parks, trails, doesn't, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't see anything where it, it mentioned streets or public roads. I think that was more or less just access to facilities.
Sidewalks.
And Brian might be able to help out with that.
Sidewalks.
Where the ADA does apply to sidewalks and other pedestrian ways that we've created. So, in our bike lanes, you know, that we have in different areas, that is one. And the ADA does already impose this requirement on us that if we see somebody with a disability that needs a reasonable accommodation, that's the language, and you guys are really familiar with reasonable accommodation when we deal with group homes, you know, we talk about that all the time in that group home con, context, but it does apply in this context as well. And so, maybe we, uh, take a, a moment to look at, at our codes that are talking about controlling our sidewalks, our parks and trails, and just acknowledge that, hey, the ADA does apply there as well. And, and maybe we do some training with our officers to, to say that. And again, it does apply to people with disability, and, and if we run into some teenagers who are running, you know, down the road a little bit fast on, on a golf cart, you know, we have a right to question whether or not they fall within that, that framework, and the ADA allows us to do that. The ADA allows you to.
Have specific language, yeah.
Yeah, and, and like you said, a placard, a handicap placard would just, you know, be the, the perfect example of, I clearly am eligible for this exception, this reasonable exception and accommodation.
Like I said, I'm not the only one in the community who.
Right.
Accesses this.
Right.
And if we can make some sort of delineation, to, to me, as somebody with a handicap, to be, uh, for me, it's important to be forward in this and then say, we are, we are accommodating, makes us a very friendly place, but at the same time, being very cautious and careful with, with public safety, whether it's with the ADA, uh, and those who should not be using if we choose not to, which, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming we won't, but if we choose not to then on this, then.
And distinguishing between, um, because under, the, the state law allows us to adopt an ordinance that allows golf cart, golf carts in the main flow of traffic. And, and I think that's the distinguishing factor here, I think that the chief has articulated his concern that, that allowing golf carts in the main flow of traffic will create these public safety issues that really cause some concern. ADA does not provide, uh, an exception requiring us to allow, it's all pedestrian access that the ADA applies. I, you know, when, when I saw the, the point that, uh, for the publication that was sent over, I just looked into it a little bit closer, and, and the Federal Highway Administration specifically goes through, you know, how the ADA applies to roadways, and it's all about pedestrian access to facilities and alongside those roadways. Wherever we allow a pedestrian to go, we have got to make sure we make accommodations for the, the ADA, that, uh, people who need that help.
And their choice of transportation.
And so, I, I think there really is some room for us to maybe look at, at making some acknowledgements in our code section for those requirements that are necessary under the ADA. But I think that's a little bit just different than, you know, passing an ordinance under the state code that says, hey, all golf carts are.
I agree.
Are legal there.
But Randy, I've seen, I've seen your cart, but I honestly don't remember all the acrodyments on it. How would, how would, how, how would that, would that burden you to have reflectors, taillights?
I have all.
Mirrors, well, see, that's, I guess that's what I'm asking.
Most, I mean, most golf carts already have headlights, taillights, not all, but most.
But would that, if, if, if that was a requirement?
But we're not, at this point, I don't see us looking at legalizing them, just maybe delineating between, oh, I see one now on the streets, the state allows it, but I don't want other children or other people thinking because it's, it's allowed at this point now. That it is allowed doesn't mean that it's allowed for everybody, and so how do we then put it into our policies if somebody looks at, well, Linden allows them under the guise of, of the ADA, and this is what we do. So, for the, those individuals in our community that choose to use them, we map out where we can. It says that I could take it into the park as long as it doesn't this and that, according to, at least what the ADA is telling me here, which I'm always very careful, but it would preclude something like the accident, a child getting on it and moving it. It has to be for the individual who has the need for the accommodations. And, um, doesn't keep people from not, you know, not parking in the handicap when they shouldn't be parking at, you know, Walmart, but.
So, if you had a child, ADA child, you might want to have a age requirement to have that? Can you say the ADA, if they're going to be in the right-of-way on the road with an ADA accommodation, can they be required to be a licensed driver?
That's what I need to look into. But, but again, we're required to make reasonable accommodations, so just off the top of my head, I'm thinking that we could impose that what is reasonable, um, a reasonable age of what, and that person's allowed to operate one of these vehicles. That's something I will look into, but again, the reasonableness is the language that we rely on there.
All right.
Because it does even go so far as to say, in a weird sense, that if I wanted to drive my golf cart into the building, the city building, you would have to make accommodations for me unless you can prove otherwise, which you can easily do, and I will never do, don't worry about that. But, um, just somebody who has a motorized wheelchair as well. It's hard for me to get in and out, and people don't make, always make accommodations, but, um, you know, I, you know, it could be a Segway, it could be anything, uh, if it's a motorized vehicle, but if it had, I could take, try to take it into, um, Home Depot. But if it had a, an engine in it with, uh, with combustion engine, they could absolutely say no. I would never do any of this anyway, but, um, the ADA can be persnickety to have to deal with, so. And I don't want to cause problems, but at this point, having gone through this and reading the chief's report, I, I agree with that. I agree that we have to be careful with that, but we also need, now need to be considerate of how do we accomplish making them still available if, if, if it's, if, if that need is there? How do we make it legal to do it ADA-wise?
I think we have a, we have a unique community, I don't think we need an ordinance at this point. I think our officers in discretion understand what's safe, what's not, and what the rules are, and they can acknowledge and, and deal with, deal with it as it occurs. If, if the council decides to move forward with some sort of allowance or, or ordinance, I would look at potentially like a permit type, uh, to file a permit with the city or something that acknowledges who it is, yeah, yeah, but. It's kind of like, kind of like a registration type issue.
All right, this is a discussion item, so council, any, how, how does the rest of the council feel about Chief Brower? If I understand correctly, then you're suggesting don't go into adopting an ordinance, let our, uh, police kind of handle it as they have been somewhat?
Yeah, I, I don't see the problem in Linden to where we need to, to create an ordinance. And I, I don't think an ordinance, I think an ordinance allowing the use by the general public would create a public safety issue.
All right.
I concur with that, my boy, at this point, so.
Okay. For our attorney, does that create an arbitrary capricious situation?
No, because we are governed by the ADA. And so, you know, if, if I had an officer issue a ticket to someone, uh, that had a golf cart or, or some other motorized vehicle in our park, and that person came in and said, look, I have a disability, I need to use this, here's the proof of my disability, I would dismiss that ticket because the ADA says.
Okay.
We have to make an acknowledgement and a recognition of that. Now, I, I think we probably do want to sit down with our, our officers, and maybe I need to do some training with them on what the ADA requires. And, and, you know, Randy, I appreciate that.
Guinea pig for you.
Yeah, that, that.
I'd love to be part of that discussion, I really would.
It's really good information that you provided to the chief on that specific aspect of the ADA. But the ADA is there, and it is, it is a law that.
All right, so we don't need to spell that out necessarily.
I guess it's just understanding and educating ourselves about that and understanding, so hopefully we never get to a ticket situation to be dismissed, because that would be very unfortunate.
Yeah.
All right, anything else, chief?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, moving on from the discussion item.
One last thing, I just wanted to say thank you everyone for indulging this. To me, it's a very important subject, unless you have trouble making it from A to B, it's, 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 these are definitely shoes that you have to walk into and actually understand them, so I appreciate the indulgence on that.
Well, we appreciate your, um, sharing the perspective for the rest of us as well, as well as the research you did on that topic. Randy, okay, item number 13, here we go. Finally, our engineers have been patient this evening. Review in action on center street enhancements. They will be presenting to us, this is somewhat of a continuation of a previous discussion.
Who hand drew 126, page 126, those planter boxes?
Those are Lehigh's.
That would be Mayor Mark Johnson of Lehigh.
Wow.
Actually. So, as you said, this is somewhat of a continuation of, uh, a couple of other city council meetings we've had. Just wanted to review the enhancement options that were selected in the last meeting back on the 2nd of May by the council. So, per my notes at least, the decision was made that the base improvements, the north side's already complete, but the south side, we would install where it's missing, curb and gutter, forfeit sidewalk, as well as associated pavement where needed. So, that kind of shows it there, as far as with the cross-section with the trail on the north side, and then these improvements on the south side where they're missing. And then, there were several enhancements that we talked about at length that were not selected. Medians were not even evaluated due to the multiple utilities that they would conflict with. Hanging baskets were not selected, neither were planter strips, we looked at those of both the north and the south. Rock mulch in any fashion, ziriscape, nor trees, so, and if I've gotten any of this wrong, please stop me.
To that point, hanging baskets were not selected, but we wanted arms that were, had the capacity for hanging baskets, right?
On the streetlights.
Yes, on the streetlights, thanks.
And then, streetlights, uh, were decided to put new streetlights along the corridor. That these would alternate between north and south, and, because we had looked at potentially just putting them all on the south side, all the new lights, and instead, we've looked at alternating those back and forth. And then, bulbouts were selected with raised planter boxes with either stamped concrete or pavers, and that they would be at all four corners at Main Street, 200 East and 400 East. And once again, there's an example of a stamped concrete or paver bulbout. And then, we did want to talk about some raised planter boxes and some of those options. So, as I said, this, I, I called Mark Johnson, I was a former coworker with Mark Johnson. He is both a designer as well as presently serving as the mayor of Lehigh City. And these are his original kind of concept drawings for what Lehigh did along their main street. And, uh, the actual final product is very similar to these. So, there's an example of all three of those, different planter boxes. The one, as you can see on the left of your screen, is the metal, it's a steel gabion-type planter box. That's the highest, and then they have the brick, and then followed by the metal on the, on the right side of the screen. And then, this is an example of Gunnison Main Street. Recently, Adam was traveling through there and saw these. This also shows some example of some stamped concrete. So, I'm just giving those as some examples. We took your recommendations, um, those enhancements that were selected, and, I'm going to zoom in here. It'd be nice if I could zoom in on a window. Keep zooming in so we can kind of go down the corridor. So, the dash lines represent existing improvements where solid lines represent future improvements. And this pink kind of crosshair represents, uh, along the corridor, existing streetlights. That would probably be removed, that's the old Cobra Head style, and the cyan crosshair, and this kind of shows more or less to help us figure out how much light that would spread out there. New streetlights. So, you can see, and I'm going to zoom in here even further so you can see maybe what those look like with these bulbouts. This is Main Street. You see an ADA at each corner, we have not designed, this is somewhat preliminary. You see an ADA at each corner. We have not designed, this is somewhat preliminary, conceptual at this point, but wanted to show that we had incorporated all those different elements that the city council had selected in the previous one. The green boxes represent planters, and this would roughly be the size of the planters, raised planter boxes. And then you can see this red kind of hatching is showing essentially kind of that stamped concrete or pavers. Uh, there are differing, we've talked to a few different communities regarding whether they prefer pavers or stamped concrete. We've had, uh, Lehigh City has pavers all along their main street. And they selected, those would be concrete pavers rather than brick. And everywhere we talked to, they said if we did select pavers, we'd want to go concrete pavers rather than brick for longevity. There is some additional maintenance cost if pavers are selected and also installation cost. Uh, as you can see, there's a number of curves around here, and so that would be somewhat difficult to install. Uh, Lehigh chose the pavers because they had some utilities under there and they could then remove them instead. And then if they ever had to replace them, that was somewhat of a more simple procedure than if you do, let's say, colored stamped concrete. Then the replacement doesn't tend to match as well. We would not have numerous utilities under these. And for the small areas, even if we were needed, needed to remove, we'd probably end up removing the entire pavers in that section. Or not pavers, but the entire concrete or pavers in that section if we had to replace it. So at this point, our recommendation would probably be to do the stamped concrete. Then the question would be whether you want to go with any kind of color. The color does tend to fade, and so there's an ongoing sealing of the concrete if you choose a color. If you were to go with the standard, uh, concrete with the raised planter boxes, that will be the most visual element. I don't know if the, the colored, uh, stamped concrete would necess, would be necessary, but that's something we could evaluate. Please feel free to stop me anytime as I'm going through here. I wanted to show you, kind of zoom out to show as we pan down with extreme speed. Indicative of scale racing on this, uh, speeders. So the, we have the alternating streetlights going from south to north as we go down the corridor. And this would require, this is at our, about a three hundred foot spacing. This would, sorry, it's very sensitive. We'll go down there. You can see we have one at each, essentially each mid-block, one at each intersection or in mid-blocks where the lengths are about three hundred feet. So in this block here, there are more than just one. Uh, our present city code would require just one, but we thought spacing them out to kind of keep it uniform looked better. This would require, we had twelve that we thought we would need last time. This ups the number to fifteen. However, we have been in talks with Rocky Mountain Power, and as we talked about, I think in our last meeting, that style of light is significantly less expensive. So that total, we believe, will actually come down from what we presented last time.
Noah, could you also share with council what you did and shared in the engineering meeting regarding turning over the lights and the cost savings that could be? Is that too early to discuss?
It's probably too early to, as far as, we would like a motion on some of this stuff, um, and some final direction going forward with this. But as far as the lights, we have been in, uh, additional discussions. In fact, we had another talk with them on Thursday with representatives from Rocky Mountain Power. And we're waiting for some additional information from them back as far as financial information on what that means long-term going forward. Uh, but those conversations may be that Linden City staff essentially in the city gets out of the street lighting business. As far as we are married at the hip with Rocky Mountain Power anyway, as far as them providing the power. But right now, we kind of have this interesting relationship where we put in the, the development puts in the streetlights, and then we end up paying a third party because the city does not own a bucket truck to come and help with any kind of repairs. Whereas Rocky Mountain Power is much better situated and, and much less costly to have them continue, do the operations and maintenance of the streetlights. So that will be coming forward to a future city council meeting, once we have better information to be able to make a, a better presentation and decision with that.
Thank you. As part of those discussions, just a quick follow-up, if you could find out from them, their service record, the timing, how well they come when there's a ticket or a call number created, how long they take to service.
So we do know that, um, even we have been using them. Sturgeon is the, their contracted, um, repair person and installation and company. And they are much more responsive than the, the company we were using previously, and the rates are much better.
All right, thank you.
That's, that's part of us driving this conversation.
Okay, apologies for the digression. I'll let you, please continue.
So I don't know, um, other than that, we, you know, like I said, we are looking at going back and forth. The spacing had actually worked out really well as far as the alternating them back and forth down the corridor. Once again, here at Seventh East, we have an existing Cobra head. We would anticipate taking that out so we don't have two lights at that intersection. And then here, we also have included, uh, the Temple site plan on there. And they will be installing along their frontage several lights. We would not anticipate alternating across their frontage, basically.
We're going to do the same as ours? Would you assume that they would?
They're using, yeah, they're using our standard lights. It's just that we're not going to be alternating across that frontage. We would just, they, because they're kind of doing that in conjunction with the rest of their lighting on site. So we would like some direction to be able to essentially move into final design. And working on this in order to construct this, uh, wanted to get some feedback if we understood the direction we were given in the last meeting. If you feel comfortable with how this looks or if you have any questions. And then we don't necessarily need to nail down right now if it's pavers versus stamped concrete. Um, we can continue to work on that as far as if you give staff that direction. But other than that, we would like kind of your final blessing, I guess, to move forward with final design and selecting a consultant or doing what work we can in, in-house.
Can you remind us rough and tough, the cost? Again, what, what did it end up being with some of the direction that you received last time?
Yeah, good question, and I will need.
The move, tar, costs are a moving target.
Yeah, they certainly are.
Yes.
They did structure like one point eight, and there was another million or so for lighting and.
Unless I, well, you know what, I can maybe get to that here. I don't know if this is going to have all that on it.
He's looking for that. Is there a general preference on those, on the, the, kind of the masonry planter boxes versus that gabion basket look? And the desire to explore it?
Gabion basket, is that a metal cage that you put rocks in?
Yeah, yeah.
They just let it kind of rust, so it turns that.
Yeah, so it's actually made out of a, a, a special steel that essentially rusts on the surface, but does not rust all the way through. They did this specifically because they liked the look of this and the slow maintenance. These will all, no matter what kind you pick, will get hit, um, on occasion. Uh, they, they have, they have not been hit regularly along, um, Lehigh Main Street, but they have significantly higher traffic volumes. They have about seventeen thousand trips a day. We will be well, well below that. But, um, yeah, these will get hit, and I think he, Mayor Johnson told me that this gabion basket style was actually fabricated here in Linden by a local fabricator.
I don't personally like the three different styles there. I think that.
That's good feedback. We, we were anticipating probably one style. We don't have as many baskets. They purposely did this for a little bit of visual breakup, but, uh, yeah, so that's good feedback. Anticipating one style kind of uniform down the.
Yeah.
Okay.
I like the one in the middle, the best, personally.
The brick?
Yep.
I prefer the brick. I don't know how everyone else feels.
I have seen some, and other municipalities, I wish I'd, I didn't think back to this moment, where they take something that's a little taller, and then they put the, the city imprint, uh, the city logo into something like that. So whether it's a little bit taller portion of it's a masonry one, I will, they've got some in South Ogden, I think, or North Ogden, one of them, North Ogden. Where they put the city logo, which we will have a new logo by then, hopefully, at least an updated one, I think would add some continuity. Something that, I don't know, could hold the, could hold the flags to cross the street with or something.
Well, even here, they've got a second planter that's different look too.
They do on that one, so, uh.
If you look at their proposal, they're, they have kind of a consistent rectangular planter on their design, if you go back to that page.
This Gunnison, this Gunnison, I'm going through there tomorrow.
Yeah, so take a look at it. Let's see here.
Send us all a selfie.
And even, and even Lehigh did not exactly follow this cons, concept drawing where they have, you know, the gabion basket. Then they had the other one more like this. They didn't go with the lower one, but, and then the metal. So do we have a consensus as far as more of a brick?
Masonry?
I like the cage, but it's almost too industrial, I guess, for what we're trying to do.
Jacob?
Yeah, I, not, not strong feelings either way. I, I do, I don't hate the cage either, but it does look a bit industrial.
Yeah.
I like, I like them, but I don't know for that application.
Yeah.
Industrial is a good word. The cost, as you had asked about, um, Council Maglaby was correct. It was about one point eight million for the base improvements. We're anticipating around, this is fifteen lights at about five thousand dollars, wouldn't you include all of the trenching and everything else? And then those twelve bulbouts with the stamped concrete, uh, that price may go up based on the planters. But, um, you're around a hundred thousand for that. So right around two million with what you've selected.
All right.
I have a question back, a few councils ago, we had two gentlemen come and were concerned about their tree down there by the Ly, Linden Elementary. Is that going to be something we have to address?
Does it do it high?
You're talking.
No, it's way down.
Probably. Narrow porters home on.
Yeah, it's a big legacy tree.
Kind of in this area here.
No, no.
Are you talking?
All the way down to State Street.
Yeah, the one across.
Tipp Academy, the outlet to Tipp Academy.
It's like right there.
The one on the corner. I think there's a tree there that he.
You're putting a light there.
So we could move the light to the opposite side, you know, of the intersection. We have not, this is not nailed down in stone as far as, there are some other trees and other things. We'll probably have to figure out if, if they're able to be left there, if we meander around them with the sidewalk. We have not gone to that level of detail yet as far as, um, in our design.
The property owner across Kitty Corner to them, they just have kind of a rock, zero escape, kind of a end point. So a light would actually probably make a lot more sense there.
Mm-hmm, it'd be pretty there.
The tree would cover it, plus there's landscaping that would be torn up to install a light.
It'd be nice to have that corner developed before we have to do all the infrastructure. Nice work.
You know, this one, we had development plans that actually got final approval and then financially couldn't pencil it out.
All right, so how do you, how do you feel about the different points that they brought before you tonight of? He asked, uh, were they going in the right direction from so far casing? Some nods, great.
If we don't color the stamped, it would just be?
Concrete.
Concrete color?
Right, so you can.
Do we have some concrete color down with the pork chops at Fessent Brook? It's like there's some color down there.
I have a question for you regarding that. Does, so when I've read traffic calming, uh, elements that can be useful. One was you create, you know, like brick across the road, similar to, uh, Center Street in, in Provo. You know, creating a visual differentiation in color kind of gets drivers to sense, okay, I need to slow down pedestrians, so.
That almost looks, you bring that up, Carolyn, I was looking at that the other day. It almost looks like it's a heavy paint.
Right, you can paint.
Like a brick, like.
You can paint it on, so it's a faux brick.
Yeah, like the iridescent flakes, uh, on balls and.
My point, my point is not suggesting we add that across the roadway, but I think, uh, a coloration adds some aesthetically maybe nicer, but also is visually to a driver, uh, catches their attention. Perhaps, I mean, I, that's up for, you're the expert. I'm just.
So this is, this is Eight Hundred West, as you'll see on there, so that is colored, as I thought. It does fade over time. So the concern is mostly from a maintenance standpoint, is trying to keep that color uniform because then if we did need to repair it, then it'll be a different color, you know, so.
But if it was, was on the bulbouts?
Okay, this would be in the bulbouts. I'm just saying, that, that is one concern. There's kind of ongoing maintenance with sealants to try to keep that. Um, and even if you seal them, the color tends to, to fade over time. But it is visually different. That's, and that's why you did, that's why they did it here, is to kind of make drivers aware that there's something different there.
All right. Thoughts?
I would like color.
Okay, color, yes from Randy.
I like color.
Jake's nodding yes. Color, Daryl, okay, everyone likes the color. You like, go with the color. I guess there's a couple of ways to accomplish that potentially. Okay. Anything else, any other, are, anything else that you like, dislike?
Noah, any other specific clarifications? I think you're in the right direction.
Are you happy with as far as we can tweak, you know, the sig, the light location based on trees? And like I said, we will, as we get into final design, we just didn't want to cut loose and start doing that and then have the council come back and say, yeah, you, you missed it.
All right. So stone planters, full brick planters, not the cage, masonry?
And masonry, yeah.
Okay, masonry planters, color stamped concrete.
Height their profile, the planters, that, I didn't hear a conclusion.
Something like that, and I will get a picture and I'll send it to everybody. It's, they're simple, but.
Early limit of the height to about the height of this table right here, because it's in the clear vision area when vehicles pull up. You can't have anything higher than two feet, so.
So that anything up to three feet potentially, or three feet or less?
If it was back behind it, you know, how they, they had the tiered look, but.
It's not very wide, you.
They're narrow.
Yeah, they're pretty narrow, and I don't know if we'd have actually, if we could go up to three feet, we might. Yeah, and this is. Keep them at two, you know, so.
But you still have some kind of plant, so if that plant's going to be tall, then.
So council, do you want to err on a little, you know, whatever the maximum height is that's feasible or very low?
I like height because I like Randy's suggestion of maybe a local along the way.
So they like to look at, err on the height that's more generous?
I would.
Sounds like.
At least on one end, get tapered down to, but yeah, that'd be lovely.
So maybe there's some stair stepping. I think the vegetation was a great comment, actually, because if you have anything that's of height, that, that adds to that block construction. And so we'll have to evaluate.
Have deer too, that will probably eat.
That's right, the urban deer.
We're going to need a fence.
The other citizens of Linden.
I don't know how a cage would look.
A ten-foot fence.
They'll get, they'll get run over more often.
All right. And, and we did discuss also, trees were probably not feasible in these planter boxes because they're going to be too small, too narrow.
No tulips, because they'll all be eaten.
That's what I was going to say, you could put tulips, you know.
They don't eat daffodils and hyacinths. I have those in my yard.
Yep.
So, and I don't know this for sure, but if these were constructed, you know, per these drawings, it looks like their highest one is at thirty inches as far as the metal. And then the other one steps down to about, you know, two feet. And I would dare say, that looks probably like that, I would think these, they vary a little bit because of the slope, but they're probably on the shorter side of things, you know, around eighteen inches on the high, up for these taller ones, and then maybe twelve at the lower ones. So you do want to stair step or you want to stay with one?
Well, I think you were talking that one end, like State Street end would be higher and towards the temple would be higher, and then the middle would be stepped down, is what I understood, but maybe it's a.
Or just uniform.
At each part.
We don't really have that many locations. We've got Main.
Right. There's what, four hundred east?
Yeah, two hundred and four hundred, and that's pretty much it. So you don't really have opportunity for planters down and then.
Yeah, I'd say.
Uniform.
I'm seeing uni, yeah, uniform.
Yeah, you don't really have anything down towards the temple per se.
Yeah, that's fine.
Have a, have a repeating element, so there's a. Have a, have a repeating element, so there's a, okay, all right. Anything else you need to know?
I wouldn't say I don't care, I'm excited about it, but I don't have strong opinions.
It'll be nice, we'll trust you guys. Okay, anything else you need from council, gentlemen?
Motion needed on this?
Okay, any, as far as direction with what they're going to do, yes?
To approve the planned public improvements to Center Street as presented with the changes that we suggested here that can be getting, be gotten from the minutes that we are taking tonight, so.
All right, thank you for the motion. Okay, motion by Councilmember Maglby, seconded by Councilmember Powell, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that is unanimous, thank you very much. Great work. Looking forward to it.
Screenshots of those little planters that, to the council, and we'll send them off, I just.
Great, all right, it'll be a work in progress. All right, item number fourteen, we've gotten to the end of our agenda here finally. This is a review and action of the secondary water meters project. All right.
So, I'll let Juan jump in here as, as needed. As part of the secondary water metering project, there's some brass fittings that look similar to these that need to go on to accommodate these meters. And so, this is part of the cost that was incorporated into Juan's original estimates that the grant and everything else is associated out of. And so, he did get several quotes, and we are recommending that this brass fitting purchase for the secondary water meter connections be awarded to Peterson Plumbing Supply in the amount of two hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred eight dollars.
Availability?
What's that?
Availability, they're available?
That's the reason why we're jumping ahead because of the supply chain. They're saying we have a long lead time, and you might not get them sold. We started reaching out as we were installing some of those pilot meters. This is if you're going to need something, you better order them now so you can get them by mid-September to end of, you know, earlier quarters.
To say that gives us a jump on the labor as well, the contracts, yeah.
So, we had, the initial cost was get the meters, and then we had a certain amount of money for the installation. So, this typically goes onto the contractor's side as part of the installation cost. So, this will just be less money we have to pay that contractor and also save us a little markup on, on the parts. So, the actual meter goes in between those two, two nuts, like the one on the bottom, the, the poly pipe comes on that, the one where Adam is pointing this cursor, connects through there. We have the shut-off valve, and then the meter connects to that nut, goes the meter, and then the second piece, and then that's where, on the threaded part of it, we connect a coupler to go into the secondary water system for the president.
Wonderful, okay. Any other questions, discussion, okay?
I will make a motion that we award the bid for brass fittings associated with the secondary water meters to Peterson Plumbing in the amount of two hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred eight dollars.
Wonderful, thank you for that motion. Mike, we'll have a second. Okay, seconded by Jake, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is ready to sign the check, let's do it. Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Powell. I do, I do have one more item to ask you all really quick, we can discuss it after, if you. Uh, there, we received a letter from the, from the Veterans of Foreign Wars. They are going to be holding a special event on August twelfth, and they've asked our chief to nominate an outstanding officer to be recognized at that event. I am unfortunately out of town. Jake, who's, who's a council member with, with our, that department, is also out of town, and our chief is also out of town. So, I would like to open invitation for any of you if you're available. It'll be a dinner.
That's the chamber pickleball term, so Jake will be tuckered out.
I'm, I'm happy to attend that.
He's out of town.
I'm, I'm happy to attend.
All right, okay, Randy, I'll forward the email then to you.
Thank you.
With the contact information for that. Okay, thank you so much, okay. All right, seconded by Mike, motion to adjourn by Randy, seconded by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.